We've got quorum and we're ready to go in the chamber.
Great, thanks so much clerks. Okay, council, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order for November 2nd. This meeting is being convened by electronic means, as such council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating in by electronic means, per the recently amended procedure by law, please ensure your video is turned on and let clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly when when we suspend the vote while we suspend the voting process. Contact information, you should have that. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out on Twitter at Van City Clerk. That's the handle, at Van City Clerk. Of course, as always, we acknowledge that we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam and Squamish and Tsleil-Wautuths people and thank them for having cared for these these lands as we work in partnership together to build this great city. And as always, thanks to staff for everything you do for us. Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr. Councillor De Genova. Absent councillor 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 Fry. Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young. I can see councillor Kirby Young on the WebEx, I guess, better sound is off. You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you so much for that. Great, so before I begin, I had some announcements. The public may participate in this meeting by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speaker should also indicate whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and whether or not they're a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress in the meeting, so you don't miss your turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web forum at Vancouver Public Hearings, so Vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. The link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person and must not be speakers themselves. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, and so we'll help you through that when you're presenting. We also have a very longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so reminding council that when addressing speakers and staff, we'll avoid using gendered honorifics and instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation, not discussions of broader policy discussions. Council members may ask clarifying questions and speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate or after the close the speaker's list. After we hear from speakers, council can approve the application in principle, refuse the application, and refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude from hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Thursday, November 4th at 6:00 PM. So we really have just one item on this on this agenda, and it is item one, streamlining rental around local shopping areas. Amendment to the C2, C2B, C2C, and C2C1 zones and creation of new rental zones for use in future rezoning applications in surrounding low-density areas under the secured rental policy. Just asking, does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item? Just a verbal indication's fine. Okay, thanks so much, so we'll proceed, get the clerks to read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the general manager of planning urban design and sustainability for council's consideration. Amendments to the zoning and development bylaw for C-2, C-2B, C-2C, and C-2C1 district schedules to allow new secured rental buildings up to six stories outside of areas subject to recent and ongoing community planning programs and other minor changes to the C-2 zones that will apply citywide. Amendments to the zoning and development bylaw to introduce three new standard rental district schedules. RR-1, RR-2A, RR-2B, RR-2C, RR-3A, and RR-3B to enable the consideration of future rezoning applications under the secured rental policy. No properties are proposed to be rezoned to a new rental RR district schedule at this time. Each future rezoning application considered under the secured rental policy would require a decision by city council following a separate public hearing. Amendments to C-2 design guidelines, new design guidelines for secured rental projects in C-2 and RR zones, and consequential amendments to the signed bylaw, noise control bylaw, parking bylaw, and subdivision bylaw, and amendments to the secured rental policy 2019 to reflect the proposed zoning changes and updates the locational criteria that will be used to determine eligibility for future rental rezoning applications. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since the referral of public to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. Two hundred forty-eight pieces of correspondence in support, two hundred forty-four pieces of correspondence in opposition, and nine pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 PM today.
Great, thank you so much. Any speakers for this item in which to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 53777 pound before the close of the speaker's list. This number's on Twitter and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Edna Cho, senior planner for housing policy, planning and urban design and sustainability here to present the application. And council, it's just under forty slides, so it'll take a little bit of time, but afterwards, of course, you're allowed to ask questions, and so we'll proceed on to the presentation.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Edna Cho, senior planner in housing policy in planning urban design and sustainability. Tonight's council report is an application from the general manager of planning urban design and sustainability and includes three main changes. One, to amend the C2, C2B, C2C, and C2C1 zones to allow six-story rental. Six-story rental is already allowed in commercial areas currently through rezonings. The change proposed is to put six-story developments into the existing zoning, so a rezoning will no longer be required. The second change is to add three new rental standard rental district schedules for use with rezonings in low-density RS and RT areas under the secure rental policy. The intent of this change is to streamline the process. It's still a rezoning, but with clearer rules and shorter process. And third, as a result of the zoning changes proposed, staff are recommending consequential amendments to the secure rental policy to update the location criteria in low-density areas. This initiative came from the secure rental policy approved by this council in November 2019. As part of the implementation, council directed staff to prepare zoning changes to improve the process to deliver new rental housing in C2 and low-density areas. Council also confirmed and provided further direction this past July as part of the Vancouver Plan Quick Starts Action Report, directing staff to bring back these proposed zoning changes to public hearing this fall. Why do we need new market rental housing? There's been very little rental built over the past forty years, with over eighty percent of the stock built prior to 1980. Although we've increased construction over this last decade with the introduction of rental incentive programs, we're still playing catch-up in a big way, and vacancy rates continue to be low, averaging about point nine percent over the last ten years. One of the challenges is that the city's approval process favors ownership housing. This chart shows various housing types by approval process over the last ten years. Broadly speaking, there are two types of development approvals at the city for new construction. One is a rezoning that's shown in yellow. It's lengthier, more expensive, and more customized. The other process is a development permit, shown in green. It's shorter, the rules are clearer, and defined directly in the zoning. You can see currently the majority of rental projects are required to go through the longer rezoning process, while townhouses and condo projects tend to go straight to development permit. There's also a much higher volume of new single-family and duplex ownership housing permits, nine thousand permits over the last ten years, and a hundred percent of these low-density developments go through a shorter development permit process. The recent provincial expert panel on housing supply and affordability speaks to this issue, highlighting the need across municipalities to speed up approvals to address current housing challenges. So in response to these issues, the next few slides will walk you through the proposal to streamline the process for rental development and to strategically locate more rental in locations near shopping and daily needs. The changes are proposed in local shopping areas, C2 zones, shown in pink, and low-density, those are the RS and RT zones close to shopping, parks, and schools, shown in blue on this illustration. First, let's look at the shopping street. What's currently allowed to be built under existing zoning is four-story mixed-use strata. Six-story rentals are allowed, but through a longer rezoning process. In low-density areas under existing zoning, almost all new development has been for laneway houses, duplexes, and character infills. So what's being proposed? On local shopping streets, the proposal is for six-story mixed-use rental without rezoning, as well as changes to enhance the public realm by requiring wider sidewalks, continuous weather protection, while mitigating shadow impacts on the shopping street. The proposal encourages greener buildings through simpler forms that require less shaping, making it easier to achieve green building standards such as passive house and zero emission buildings. These changes will strengthen shopping areas by having minimum commercial space requirements and encourage higher ground floor commercial units to accommodate a variety of shops such as restaurants. Over time, these changes will result in a higher customer base to support local businesses. In addition, there's an opportunity on arterials to expand retail and the shopping street into adjacent low-density areas currently zoned RS and RT by including mixed-use options for four-story market rental and six-story rental with a percentage of units secured at below-market rents. These forms mirror what's proposed in C2, but expand them into the adjacent low-density areas. Extending these shopping areas will provide greater retail opportunities for residents without redeveloping sites that already have existing retail. These projects will still require rezoning, but it will be a simpler process through the use of standardized zones. Turning to the low-density arterial streets zoned RS, RT next to shopping, we're proposing a five-story market rental option and a six-story option with twenty percent of the units secured permanently at below-market rents. These projects still require rezoning, but through a shorter process with the use of standardized zones. The rationale is to provide more housing choice, locating it near shopping areas close to daily needs and access to transit. Again, same as in the commercial areas, we're introducing simpler forms to make it easier to achieve zero emission buildings. We also look to livability and are introducing maximum building depths to prevent overly deep units. As well, we know that family-sized units are easier to achieve in simpler building forms with less setbacks. Now, looking at the local street, a block off the arterials behind Commercial, the proposal is for a series of missing middle forms for rental, from four-story apartment buildings to townhouses and multiplexes. Change to neighborhoods will be incremental, as we've included limits to assemblies, ensuring there are opportunities and options for single-lot developments, as well as requirements to limit the building depth. Just like in the previous slides, we're proposing simpler forms as well as surface parking options to meet climate emergency goals. And finally, in terms of livability, an additional benefit to locating houses on local streets is that it's away from noise and air pollution. Overall, these two sets of zoning changes together in C2 and adjacent low-density areas will start to create more complete neighborhoods around local shopping areas to encourage walkability and livability, as well as to achieve multiple council objectives to increase rental housing by creating a diverse range of missing middle rental options, introduce more clarity around our development processes, greener buildings, while supporting local shopping areas, some of which have been struggling in recent years, by creating a bigger customer base. Over time, this will create more vibrant local shopping areas and neighborhood hubs by prioritizing livability, the public realm, and by adding more residents close by. These changes are aligned with the goals of the Vancouver Plan, including becoming a more sustainable, carbon-neutral city and affordable city, as well as creating complete and connected neighborhoods. In addition, these changes are aligned with the climate with the city's climate emergency action plan to reduce carbon pollution, including big move one and two, to create more complete neighborhoods where people can walk to their daily needs and have access to transit. Big move four, creating greener buildings through requirements for zero emissions and hot water, and by encouraging wood-frain construction, which has less embodied carbon pollution than concrete. These next few slides will go through the more technical details of the zoning changes. So recommendations A, C, and D in the report are proposing amendments to the C2 districts outside of community plan areas to include a six-story rental option without rezoning. The maximum is six stories, and the FSR is between three point five to three point seven on larger corner sites. The maximum height is seventy-two feet if higher ceilings are proposed on the ground floor. Minimum retail space requirement is point three five FSR, as well as increased front yard setbacks to improve the public realm. The current requirements for family housing and green buildings through rezonings will be carried over into the district schedules. In addition, we'll be making minor amendments to all the C2 areas, that's the base zoning, to align the public realm improvements for wider sidewalks, as well as the commercial retail enhancements for minimum retail space requirements and higher ceilings. Second, we're creating three new rental zones to be used for simplified rezonings in low-density areas next to local shopping. This is recommendation A, B, and E in the report. The first zone, RR1, are the off-arterial options for three-to-four-story townhouses and three-story multiplexes. The densities range from one to one point four five FSR. The second zone, RR2, is for apartment rental forms. On arterials, there is a five- and six-story form. There's also a four-story option, which can be on or off arterials. The densities range from one point seven five to two point four FSR, going up to three FSR for social housing. The third zone is RR3, which is the mixed-use rental buildings on arterials with retail on the ground floor. There's a four- and six-story option with a maximum density of up to three point five FSR for the six-story form to align with the changes proposed in C2. Again, for the low-density areas, rezoning is still required, but it's simplified, much like the RM8 zones for townhouses under the Canby Plan. As a result of the zoning changes just described, we're proposing some consequential changes to the secure rental policy, which is recommendation F in this report. This is an updated map that shows shopping in red and sites in low-density areas eligible for simplified rezonings are in blue. The dark blue are the arterial roads and the light blue are the off-arterial locations. The updated locational criteria requires eligible sites to be within the first full block of an arterial road with transit, as well as within a short five-minute walk of a neighborhood shopping area. As part of this work, we tested the levels of affordability that could be achieved based on the densities proposed. We found in the RS and RT zoned areas that some additional level of affordability beyond market rental could be achieved in the six-story forms. Based on testing, we're proposing that a minimum of twenty percent of the building be permanently secured as below-market rental. For a hundred percent residential buildings, we're proposing ten percent below CMHC average market rents for the city, which represents a thirty percent discount off new market rents. For mixed-use buildings with a higher three point four FSR density, we can achieve a bit more affordability. So the maximum starting rents proposed are twenty percent below average market rents, which represents a forty percent discount to new market rents. In addition, we are also proposing a form of vacancy control at unit turnover. The rents have to be reset to the same discount to current year CMHC rents. We did test if deeper levels of affordability would be possible, but found that significantly more density would be needed, which would push the buildings into higher concrete forms. Let's look at the affordability of the below-market rental units proposed and how this translates into rents and incomes. The gray bar on the graph are the new market rents, and the salmon and green bars are the rents of the below-market units at a ten and twenty percent discount from average CMHC rents. The incomes that will be served by these rents range from forty-two thousand to ninety-seven thousand. For comparison, this chart adds in the median housing cost of ownership for eastside condos, shown in the dotted purple bar, which are higher compared to rental. The incomes required range from eighty-six thousand to two hundred and seventeen thousand. In addition, a significant down payment of between eighty-two thousand to two hundred and twelve thousand is needed upfront in order to gain entry into ownership. We are also proposing social housing on arterials. A hundred percent social housing projects can receive additional density up to three FSR and six stories through the new rental schedules. This next section goes over engagement findings. So starting at the broader city level, there's been significant engagement completed as part of the Vancouver Plan process that's relevant to this work, through multiple surveys, stakeholder workshops, as well as Nine My City, My Neighborhood workshops, and Six Sketching the Future Design workshops. The key themes we heard around housing was the need for more affordable housing options across the city, strong support for the concept of complete neighborhoods, including more missing middle forms of housing so that people can live close to their daily needs, have access to grocery stores, restaurants, and be part of vibrant communities where they can make strong social connections. Turning to more specific engagement, since November 2019, when we started this implementation work up till the public hearing, there have been over twenty thousand points of contact and many engagement opportunities with residents, organizations, and stakeholders through a range of different methods. Roughly three thousand five hundred residents participated in surveys, meetings, and information sessions. In 2020, pre-COVID, we had six in-person information sessions in locations across the city. In 2021, we adjusted our methods to go all virtual and held two virtual public information sessions, as well as forty one-to-one meetings with the public, stakeholder, and the industry. In addition, we also held over twenty-five stakeholder and advisory meetings. In terms of notification methods, we put up posters at community centers and libraries, and we did targeted social media, which received over a hundred and seven thousand impressions, as well as notified through our various email lists, newspapers, as well as providing information on the city's website. We heard from a good representation of homeowners, forty, forty-seven percent, and forty-four percent renters. This map shows where we've held the in-person information sessions in March of 2020, as well as where respondents lived from those who completed our spring 2021 survey, where there was a good distribution of responses by neighborhood. Overall, we heard broad support to streamline the development process to deliver rental faster, as well as support for creating more complete neighborhoods by adding missing middle forms in areas close to shopping and transit. We received broad support to engage new to encourage new secure rental housing in more neighborhoods, including seventy-two percent support for more market rental, below-market rental, and social housing. We did note a difference in perspective between renters and owners. There was more support for the proposals from renters overall with eighty-three percent support, with many emphasizing the importance of living in secure rental housing as compared to secondary rental, as well as very strong support to have rental options off arterials on local streets away from noise and pollution. We also heard that the proposals were too modest and didn't go far enough into the neighborhoods. Some felt that shadow impact shouldn't be a main concern when compared to providing more housing affordability. From homeowners, we received majority support for the proposal at fifty-one percent. We did hear concerns expressed overshadowing, loss of views, negative impacts on property values, as well as concerns over the pace of change and loss of neighborhood character. We also received specific feedback on the C2 changes and low-density changes. In the commercial areas, we received broad support for allowing up to six-story rental, as well as the proposals to improve the commercial spaces and public realm. We did hear some concern around the displacement of existing rental and commercial tenants and around the height, scale, and shadowing of the proposed building forms. In the low-density areas, we heard support for locating new rentals off arterials. Some residents didn't think the changes went far enough. In terms of concerns, they were over the building design and shadow impacts, particularly off arterials. In some areas, we heard concerns over the loss of character and heritage and over the displacement of renters living in secondary suites. In addition, we found there was confusion from residents that thought this was a brand-new policy and didn't realize the ability to propose rental in these locations have already been allowed for a decade. There is also confusion as to whether rezonings would still be required. So the next few slides will summarize how we've changed the proposal based on the concerns we heard. First, in response to concerns around the impact of renter displacement, a number of recent city actions have been undertaken to increase renter protection. In C2 areas, we extended the rental housing stock official development plan, which requires one-for-one rental replacement in these areas. We also increased our tenant protection policy in 2019, which expanded protection to tenants living in secondary rental in low-density areas involving assemblies. We analyzed the development trends in these areas since 2012 and found the biggest displacement risk to renter in these low-density areas is through the tearing down and building of new single-family houses and duplexes. We estimate the loss range from four hundred and twenty to six hundred and sixty units. This is ten times higher compared to the loss of rental due to the building of new rental apartments, which totaled forty-nine units and is offset by a gain of nine hundred units in the same period. It's also important to note that renters displaced by redevelopment to new single-family houses and duplexes do not get the added protection of the tenant relocation and protection policy. New ownership house construction will continue to be the primary driver of renter displacement in these areas, whereas these proposals create a significant net gain in new secure rental housing, provides existing renters with more protection, and results in lower numbers of secondary rental units demolished in comparison. In response to concerns around displacement of local businesses, we have included opportunities to increase retail in areas adjacent to C2 areas so as not to displace existing businesses. Work on the development of a new commercial tenant assistance policy is underway to help commercial tenants with relocation. This includes development of information and educational resources to assist commercial tenants with relocation planning, including tips for finding and leasing a new space that will work for them. Consultation is happening this month, with a council report back following the consultation. Finally, in response to the concerns we heard around the pace of change, loss of character homes, and renter displacement, staff have refined the eligibility map in the secure rental policy. The map on the left shows the original eligibility map under the 2012 Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, which allowed rezonings in low-density areas within a hundred meters of an arterial citywide. In response to public feedback, the new proposed map narrows the total eligibility area in comparison and removes the RT5, RT7, RT8, and RT10 zones, which contain more heritage, character homes, and secondary suites in Kitzelano and Kensington Cedar Cottage from eligibility. We have also pulled back on pullback to focus on locations in close proximity to public transit, local shopping areas, and other daily needs that support walkability. local shopping areas, and other daily needs that support walkability. In summary, tonight's application from the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to amend the C2 district schedules and to create three new rental schedules to be used for simplified rezonings are intended to make it easier to build rental projects, increase housing choice for renters through new missing-middle rental forms that will gradually integrate with existing neighborhoods, as well as to promote complete neighborhoods and respond to the climate emergency. So, thank you. That concludes the presentation. And for council questions, I'm joined by a full staff team in PDS, as well as Blair Urb from Coriolis Consulting, who conducted the financial testing on the proposal.
Thank you very much for that complete presentation, explanation of the policy. There is no application team here for this, so... We are going to... Council, my computer is just... My remote computer has crashed or something, so I'm going to have to ask clerks to get IT to try to fix that for me. Perhaps they can help me with a questions list. Clerks, do you have a list of counselors who wish to ask questions to this? And I'll just time it remotely.
Yes, at the moment, we have Counselor Kirby Young, Counselor Dominado, Counselor Hardwick, Counselor Frye, and Counselor Swanson on the speakers list on question queue, so I can advance them and time them if you'd like.
Thank you so much. So we'll start with Counselor Kirby Young. And if you could put me on the list for questions, too, please, clerks.
Okay, thanks, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I have a number of questions. One of the concerns that I have heard relates to the notion of affordability. And I heard you say that, and I quote, "the low risk of renter displacement due to new rental development", and suggested you're saying that if council, for example, were not to adopt this policy, am I correct in reflecting back to you that you are saying that threat of redevelopment from new houses, duplexes, or other ownership housing would actually pose a greater risk to loss of affordable rental than this policy would?
Analysis that we've completed, there is a lot more permits that are currently taken out for the construction of new single-family houses and duplexes.
Does that analysis take into account potential ideas that people have that this would generate lot assemblies, for example, and therefore result in loss of existing affording rental stock?
So, we have done an analysis, and based on last 10 years of development under the existing AHC policy, we have seen a loss of 49 rental units over that period. So, you know, that compared to the, you know, approximately 1,700 permits that are taken out on the redevelopment of single-family houses and duplexes.
Okay. With respect to you, you also mentioned limited assembly in this report with respect to the fact that there was sort of parameters built. Can you expand on what you meant by that?
Yes, so, we have some controls on the assemblies, which I can maybe get Marie to speak about in terms of the low-density areas. There's a range of options on the table, from one-lot developments to some assemblies.
Thank you, Edna. So, as Edna mentioned, the low-density transition areas, the local streets, have options ranging from single-lot development for multiplexes to townhouses and apartments, which do require assembly. We have worked hard in our regulations to manage the scale of the buildings on the assembled sites. So for arterial streets, buildings are required to be broken into individual buildings, a series of individual buildings rather than one large building when there is a big assembly. And on the local streets, there is a cap on the assembly size of 100 feet or approximately three lots. And both these measures are intended to manage the scale of the new developments and better incorporate the apartments into the low-density detached house context.
Okay, so in addition to sort of respecting the character of the neighborhoods, as you've mentioned, with the assembly parameters or sort of dampeners, if I can frame it that way, and just reflecting back that I also heard that the only forms that would be permitted off arterial would be three- to four-story townhomes, three-story multiplex, or four-story rental. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so these larger, six-story would be arterial only?
That's correct. The five- and six-story buildings are for arterial streets only.
Okay, and can you go back to the slide that you had with respects to the rents and the affordability piece? Where you were showing the below-market rents and CMHC rents, the new ones? And can you walk through the math for me? Because I wasn't clear on the peach in the green bars that showed a 10% and 20% discount? And what's that that's discounting from? It appears to be a more significant discount to the gray bars. Just want to get clarity on that.
Okay. So, this is the slide? Yes?
That's right, yep.
Okay, so the gray bars are the market rents, and based on CMHC new market rents. And the salmon and green bars are the proposed below-market rents. So these will apply to the six-story arterial options. And the pink bar...
And you can say quickly in the time that I have left, like, that's more than 10%. So that's my question. It doesn't equate to 10 or 20 off of $1,653, for example, on the video example.
So, the pink bar is a 10% off CMHC average rents? And then the green is a 20% discount off average rents?
Is there possible there's an error in that slide? Because that's not 10%.
So, no, so the gray bar is not average rents. The gray bar is new market rents. So, that's the difference. So, the salmon bar is actually, if you compare it to the gray bar, it's a 30% discount from new market rents, and the green bar is actually a 40% discount off new market rents. Which is... Yeah, it's just how we're expressing it as average market rents versus new market rents. Sorry for the confusion.
Sorry, I'm out of time, but thank you.
Sorry, clerks, my computer still isn't up and working. Can we move to the next set of questions, I think from Counselor Dominado?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'm going to follow up on the question that Counselor Kirby Young asked, and it's with respect to the caps on land assemblies. Does that exist today, the controls that you were referencing?
No, they don't.
Okay, so that's...
Yeah, it's new for this policy, yeah.
Okay, but new, beyond this policy, new in terms of our development landscape in the city?
Well, it's specific to this planning program in terms of, you know, what we thought was would be the best thing to do here. There's different assembly requirements across the city depending on the planning program.
Okay, thanks. That's great, thanks. I'm hoping maybe staff could expand. I know it's referenced in some of the Q and A towards the end of the report, the land economics, because we've had a number of residents write us and express concerns about land inflation. And maybe, do we have staff that could speak to that? And what are the implications for a program of this type?
Absolutely. We actually have Blair Urb on the WebEx, who can go through the economic testing that he did for this proposal and of all the different housing forms that we're proposing. Blair?
Hi, Counselor Dominado, Blair Urb here from Coriolis. I'll try to address your question about impact on land values, is what I think I heard. So, we tested quite a wide range of different scenarios with staff for the rental options being considered. And what we effectively found is that at the higher end of the densities being proposed for the new zoning districts, we wouldn't expect there to be any significant upward pressure on land values beyond the current single-family property values or RT property values in these locations. There may be some, particularly in pockets of the city where rents are particularly high and lots are particularly large. And that really means parts of the west side of the city may see some upward pressure. But generally speaking, we don't see any reason for property values to go up materially due to these zoning districts.
Okay, thanks for that. Excuse me, I appreciate that. I know there may be other questions on that, so I'll move along. Could staff speak to, in the context of this proposal, I think we've seen with rental projects, that the DCLs are waived, not the utility DCLs, but the other DCLs. Is that contemplated here?
So, with this proposal, we're not recommending any changes to the DCL waivers. We did find during the, when we did our 10-year rental review of the rental incentives in 2018, that the DCL waiver was still an important incentive that was needed to make rental projects viable, particularly on the east side of the city.
Okay, so in the context of this proposal, what would we potentially be looking at with simplified rezonings?
So, in terms of simplified rezonings, this will work much like the can-be-townhouse rezonings, where you would still, the public would, you would still be required to do a rezoning, but rather than rezoning to a CD1, which is customized and individualized, it would be to a specific zone. And then, so it would be a shorter process, and a lot of the former development issues would be dealt with at the development permit process stage.
Okay, I'll circle back on the DCL question later. I want to move on to a question around, the focus here is on rental, but is there an opportunity within this framework for rent to own?
Not specifically in this proposal. All of these units here are secured through a housing agreement for the life of the building.
Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of the built form in the map, the visuals you had, you demonstrated sort of potentially four-story apartments, fourplexes, stacked townhomes. Would it be basically open to the property owner or developer to determine what they'd like? Do we have any influence in terms of that? Or that's just the mix that would be permissible, and we'd really have to depend on the will of the property owner in developing the built form?
You know, we proposed all these options to provide flexibility depending on the context. So it is up to the individual owner as to, you know, what they're interested in, and obviously the viability of, you know, their situation.
Okay, thanks. I'm trying to get at, is there a way to incent more of sort of that ground-oriented housing, which is more the stacked townhomes, row homes, in the context of this proposal? If there's a tool to do that? And I'm not sure about my time. I'm not sure he's keeping the time right now.
I am. Any of eight seconds, five seconds?
Can staff answer that quickly?
There is, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Apologies, Counselor Dan Garrison, from Assistant Director of Housing Policy, just trying to be really quick here. I think in this proposal, it's primarily, the most viable forms we're proposing are the apartment forms. We have included the lower-density, ground-oriented forms as options for people to pursue. We do think that those may be viable for sort of family situations, like you see a lot with laneway houses. It's going to be tough for those ones to be commercially viable in a really wide scale, given the rental nature. Of course, at that scale of development, and as you've indicated support for in the past and other members of council, we can look at ownership options through the Vancouver Plan as well, through subsequent work. But this policy focused on rental will provide those opportunities, but it's going to be a little bit challenging financially.
We're well over. Thank you. Counselor Hardwick, up to five.
Okay, how much of an increase in zone capacity does this represent? Anybody? At current rates of construction, how many years would it take to build out all the...
Counselor Hardwick, you just have to give staff a chance to answer.
Okay, I'd be very interested to hear the answer to that first question. How much of an increase in zone capacity does this represent?
Counselor, we haven't calculated this in terms of increases in zoned capacity. We've just done an estimate based on past, our experience over the last 10 years of what the level of production that these policies could generate. And so we've estimated that there's a potential for another 4,700 units, about 2,700 of that in the C2 proposals, possibly up to 2,000 in the lower-density areas. But we haven't done that as a percentage of zone capacity or that sort of analysis.
Well, I can understand why, since you haven't provided zone capacity numbers to date. But at current rates of construction, how many years would it take to build out all the extra-density units that are proposed in this plan?
We've only estimated it so far for the first 10 years, and it's based on our experience as these policies and zoning amendments are essentially similar to putting in place and expediting a process for what we've seen in these areas in the last 10 years. We've just estimated over the next 10 years what the delivery would be, as I said.
Okay. So if staff can't provide this information, why are we making such a major policy choice without good data?
Well, where we do, we think we have very good data, is on the need for rental housing. We have not, you're correct, done the zone capacity analysis, but we do know that we've seen over the last census period, 76% of the net new households were renter households. The majority of construction in the city continued to be ownership housing, and so we are looking at ways to expand to meet the supply and meet the demand for rental housing.
Purpose-built rental housing. Given what's happened at West King Edward and Dunbar, among other places, why is staff suggesting that there will be no serious land lift? At that location, proposed rental development has more than doubled land values.
I think we heard from our economics consultant, or development economics consultant Blair Urb, a moment ago, that we've tested a range of proposals here and not found any significant uplift in land value. If there are, you know, there will be times in the market where owners and potentially folks in real estate and buyers speculate. But we found through the work we've done and the analysis we've done here that there is no or limited upward pressure on land values as a result of these policies.
That flies in the face of everything I've seen. So, given the risks of a major giveaway of land lift, should this type of proposal not be pilot-tested in certain designated areas first? That way, the city will know whether it's giving away a massive amount before it does so, rather than just simply hoping or aspiring, to use one of the favorite words, against the evidence that it won't?
I guess I would just say that the proposals that are before you today are the outcomes of pilot programs. The Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy was a pilot program to look at opportunities in a limited way to deliver affordable rental housing in these areas. And we did not find significant land lift in any of the rezonings that came through under that policy. In the C2 zoning districts, we've actually exempted those projects from CACs because we found over 10 years, we didn't find land lift in a single project of doing a CAC and pro forma assessment of all of the rezonings.
So then, if we go and we get those examples, and we look at them through B.C. assessment, and we look that every time on July 1st, B.C. assessment comes in and reassesses those properties on highest and best use, you're trying to tell me that we're not going to...
Sounds kind of like a debate, Counselor Hardwick, so...
No, I'm asking, I'm saying seriously, are you seriously saying that? Because then that is a challenge to people, because it flies in the face of everything we know. So I'm asking the question, will you provide that for cross-analysis?
Staff?
I'm sorry, Counselor, could you repeat what you're asking?
Yeah, where you're saying there's no land lift, and you have evidence that there's no land lift, are you prepared to prove it?
Well, our assertion that there's no land lift can be found in one of the appendices of the report, where Blair Urb from Coriolis Consulting outlines the findings of the financial testing that he did to support the project, or the policy proposals today. So this is in the report before you.
Okay, so we're just taking their word for it, but it would be possible then to cross-evaluate...
Point of order.
Right, Counselor...
Can we not, we may have differing opinions, but could we not cast dispersions on the experts or the staff that are offering their input? that are offering their input to the process?
Or just on the point of order?
Is it possible to cross?
Excuse me, councillor.
Is it not possible to cross-examine?
Excuse me, councillors. Points of order, points of order require a specific section of the Charter in order to be acknowledged or ruled upon, so I'm going to go back to councillor Hardwick. But I would say it's, it's not debate councillor Hardwick, this is a, under this quasi-judicial hearing, this is a factual exploration. We have plenty of time for debate after the motion is moved.
I'm all into the facts, that's what I'm getting at, but my time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bly, up to five.
Thanks very much, Mayor. I just want to reflect a few questions that we may hear from the speakers that are coming up next, just to get some advance answers on some of the questions that we've seen in written correspondence. And one of them is, is the concern around the low-density rent, the part of the policy that speaks to the low-density on local streets, I think is how it's referred to, and that refer, in that extending, that policy extending to areas that are currently exempt from this report. Can staff comment on that concern, how you'd respond to that?
Thanks for the question, Graham Anderson, Housing Policy. Just a point of clarification. So what we've actually done in the updated proposal is to exempt some of the RT zones in Kitzellano and Kensington Cedar Cottage that were formerly included.
So I just want to make, we have very limited time and a number of questions, so I'm aware of that. I'm just asking concerns from residents, is that once this policy passes in one or two years, let's say, next council, that that will then extend to other areas that are currently exempt. Can staff respond to that concern?
I'm not sure that we heard that concern. We did hear and base that decision to remove the RT zones on the basis of concerns about potential for loss of existing secondary rental and potential impacts on character and heritage homes in those RT zones, which is why we elected to propose that they be removed from the policy. A future decision could be taken to reevaluate that, but at this time, that's what we're recommending for the policy.
Okay, great, thank you. Another question is around highest and best use, and residents have expressed concern that they will be taxed to highest and best use over time, and we're talking maybe in 10 years. What's the likelihood, or not at all likely, that that could occur, that people may be concerned with?
So we've done the testing to, and the results have shown that there isn't expected to be an increase in land values as a result of this, this policy. But perhaps our consultant Blair can comment further on his work?
Sure thing. And Blair, I was actually just about to ask you a follow-up question, if I can pose that, and that could be folded into your responses. What proportion of new homes might be townhomes? Could council expect maybe townhomes or row homes versus four-story rental buildings?
Hi councillor Bly, it's Blair Urb here again. So first part of that question was related again to the topic of assessed values. So all, all of the work we've done suggests that there should not be substantial upward pressure on existing single-family home or duplex lot values due to these proposed zoning districts. Mr Garrison, I think quite rightly outlined that it's hard to know exactly what any particular developer will bid for a house, but our work suggests that there's not uplift in any significant way on, on, on most properties in the city of Vancouver due to these proposed zoning districts. If it turns, now BC Assessment bases their assessments on actual land transactions. So if, if it does turn out that some developers are bidding up the price of houses, then it is possible that assessments will go up over time, because BC Assessment bases their assessments on actual market transactions. If that happens, homeowners who have owned their home for 10 years or more are permitted to apply for what's called, I believe, a Section 198 with BC Assessment authority to request that their assessment be based on a house value, not development site value. So that's a common occurrence in locations where redevelopment is occurring. So that's the assessment answer. Your question about townhouses, our work shows that the viability of rental townhouses is not strong. It takes a very unique situation for a rental townhouse project to be attractive to a builder or a developer. It's a possibility that some of it will proceed on in specific circumstances, but we wouldn't expect to see a tremendous amount of rental townhouse development.
Okay, great, thank you. And just a procedural question, Mayor, if I may. Will we have a second round of questions to staff after speakers?
Yes, absolutely. We, we could always move for a second round now. We could wait until after speakers, and we always have a round of questions, and we could even have another round of questions after if we want to, so.
I just want to make sure there will be a chance after we get from speakers. Great, thank you.
Thanks. I've got myself on the list for questions.
Sorry, Mayor Stewart.
Oh yes, I know, do you want to pause?
Yes.
I'm sorry, clerks, yeah, we're going to pause for 20 seconds and just redo the list. Sorry about that, clerks, I let you down twice there. So, thanks for jumping in. So I guess I'm not next, it's councillor Fry, then councillor Swanson and myself.
Yeah, and we're ready to go.
Okay, great, thanks. So councillor Fry, you're up for five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and thanks clerks for juggling that. I know there was a technical glitch there. And thanks to this team, staff team who were there in person today answering these questions, it's great, thank you. Great report, a lot of work that went in. Just curious on the DCL question, we're basically saying that there are no, this is, this is mostly going to be DCL waived projects by and large, if they're meeting the existing criteria?
So based on past developments through the SRP policy, we estimate about 50% of the projects take up the DCL waiver, so we would anticipate that, that trend probably to continue.
Okay. Are we considering any kind of rate of change mechanism? And in particular, I'm looking at some of the orange streets like Kingsway, where we have a lot of really sort of funky longstanding businesses and a vibrant business community that is also kind of a bit rundown and low, low stories, seems ripe for development. We contemplate anything like that?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
A rate of change mechanism, so that we're not seeing, for instance, Kingsway completely redeveloped, because it's, it's an affordable option and it's identified as orange on the map.
So, no, we haven't considered that in tonight's proposal. However, we did extend the rental housing stock official development plan to C2 areas earlier this year. And the impact of that is essentially that the properties that have existing rental will likely not be good redevelopment candidates. So those, those properties would be protected and, you know, the pace of development there would be slowed down as a result of that council action.
Right, I was, I was actually thinking from more of a retail perspective, I appreciate that there's rental housing protections in place. I'm a little bit more concerned around the retail continuity and.
Certainly, yeah, and we have Matt Burke here from the ELER work, who can speak to some of the measures that we're contemplating in terms of businesses.
Hi, good evening, council. Matthew Burke from Economic Development Planning. I guess the first thing I would say in response to that is, the proposal tonight does provide opportunities for growth in housing and mixed-use in areas that are not already home to existing businesses. And so what that can help to do is just distribute the development pressure that we might see on our arterial streets to, to other areas.
Okay. We can come back on that one on the second round maybe, but curious then, by all that same notion, have we contemplated any, any mechanisms to add retail ground level into the new RR2 and even the RR3 that we're talking about, but really on the RR2, because I think there's a lot of big stretches of, of arterial street that could benefit from ground-level retail in the interest of complete communities? Retail on RR2?
Thank you councillor Fry. Marie Lenahan, Development Planner. I'll take off my mask, sorry. We didn't contemplate adding commercial to the residential apartment and off arterial locations. Introducing commercial can be challenging when there isn't a strong context of commercial. And we also wanted to stick with known typologies in terms of the rental apartment and townhouse options. But this is certainly something that will be explored through Vancouver Plan and work to come at a future date.
Okay, and given I haven't got a lot of time, I will just circle back on the Vancouver Plan. How was this work aligned with Vancouver Plan? I see it kind of mentioned in some of the slides, but not as much in the engagement.
Yeah, certainly. So this work is aligned with the Vancouver Plan in terms of the long-term goals around increasing affordable housing to create, to address the climate emergency, as well as to create complete and connected neighborhoods. So the proposal you're seeing tonight is directly addressing those three core goals of the Vancouver Plan. And in addition, through the engagement, we did ask about, you know, these concepts in terms of adding more housing around local shopping areas and introducing missing-middle housing forms, as well as increasing housing options and affordable housing options in these areas.
Thank you, that's the five. Councillor Swanson?
Yep, thanks. I think I saw that there was only seven lots in RR areas that would be, where you think it would be financially viable to have the non, the below-market units. And that there were, you're expecting 4,000 new units over the next 10 years, rental units. So I'm wondering, what percent of the housing are you thinking, how many, how many non, how many below-market units would we get, and how many non-market units do you estimate that we could get out of this?
We, we haven't done that analysis in terms of the number of below-market units. We think we'll get, you know, overall, I think the bulk of what we would, we would achieve would be the market rental units. But we do know that in certain instances, that the below-market option would be viable, and particularly in the, in the mixed-use option, you know, it could, it could work. So we do anticipate some take-up, but probably the bulk of the units will be market rental.
So probably not more than, say, over 10 years, not more than maybe, say, 30 units a year would be below-market?
I mean, it would be hard to, it would be hard to predict that. But, you know, we, we would anticipate that the take-up be, the bulk of it would be the market rental, for sure.
Okay. What plans do you have to protect residents on arterials from pollution and noise?
Yep, we have, Sander, you gonna take this question? Graham's gonna take this question.
Thank you for the question. In regards to protection from noise, so the existing C2 zones, and as would apply to the new rental option, already includes some standard acoustic regulations to mitigate noise impacts in residential units on arterials. As for the new RR zones, there's work underway as part of the regulation redesign to explore zoning bylaw changes that would actually add those same acoustic regulations to Section 10. And as part of those changes, which are expected to be brought forward sometime mid-next year, we would propose to apply those to the RR zones as well. The timing of that should mean that they would apply to new projects coming through this policy.
So that's acoustic, what about pollution from trucks?
So there's also work underway as part of the Sustainability Group's work program to explore potential zoning or policy changes to help improve mitigation of traffic-related air pollution, as well as air pollution related to things like forest fires. And we do have staff from Sustainability on the line that can share some more details about that work.
Hi, council, Patrick Enright, Senior Green Building Engineer here with Sustainability Group. Yes, Graham is correct in that we are exploring further changes to address the climate emergency coming to council, the recommendations coming to council next year. And within that, we are looking at measures that can address, for all building types, not just rental, but for all building types, addressing climate resilience as well as air quality measures, such as filtered air and/or air conditioning. And these are measures that we can explore across, across the city.
Thanks. Can I move for a second round here before my time is up?
Sure can. Do we have a second for that?
Second, councillor Kirby.
Councillor Kirby, thanks. All in favor of a second round, say yay? Any opposed? I have one nay. We'll have to take a vote on this now, so I will just stop your timer. So, so I'll need somebody to move a motion to have a second round. I'm sorry, that was councillor Swanson. Do we have a second for that again?
Councillor Kirby.
Second, councillor Domnado.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Dejanova?
I, I had to vote nay because I couldn't debate this, and there's no cue to vote on this separate motion, so is it debatable? Mayor Stewart, I thought it was.
I want to proceed, y'all, this asks the clerks if asking for a second round of questions is debatable. I don't believe it is, but I will check with clerks. Just waiting for clerks, whether or not the motion to have a second round of questions is debatable.
No, it is not debatable.
So I suspected, okay, so we're going to call a vote on this then? Councillor Dejanova. Okay, that's passed with councillor Hardwick posing a second round question. So we're going to go back to the main queue. Councillor Swanson, you have about 25 seconds.
Yeah, for Mr Urb, I was wondering if Coriolis could give us their calculations that show that there would be no land lift for rental housing. Could you email it to us or something?
Has to be in public, councillor Swanson, so perhaps you might want to save that for your second round? Has, it has to be, the public has to see all the information that we see, so.
But they could email it to the public, the public, we could post it, right?
I'll, I'll let clerks figure out how that'll happen, but I'll, if you want to go back on for a second round, that we can sort that out then.
Okay.
I'm on the queue next, and clerks, oh sorry, staff, I have a question about climate emergency response, our action plan, and how it ties to this proposal. I'm just wondering if you could explain big move number one. Is there a staff person there that can explain big move number one to us?
Hi, council, this is Doug Smith, Director of Sustainability. And so big move number one is essentially complete neighborhoods, 15-minute walkable neighborhoods, and designing communities where people can have less reliance on cars and more reliance on transit, walking, cycling. And this leads to not only lower greenhouse gases, but also makes for more affordable and healthier, less noise, less pollution communities as well.
Thanks. Is this, is this, this proposal in front of us today considered part of the emergency, climate emergency action plan?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Big move one is envisioned to be captured within Vancouver Plan, and this is one of the sort of almost the quick starts under the Vancouver Plan, as, as big move one is really about lands. That's the main, main push for a big move.
And can you refresh us on the, on what the targets are, what we're trying to achieve, and by what date in terms of this big move?
So big move one is to have 90% of the city be accessible, or sorry, 90% of residents have access to their daily needs through walking, biking, or transit, as opposed to having to get in a car and drive to where you need to go. And by 2030, ideally, which is a challenge with the speed of development, but that's what we're working on at this point.
Right, and is this, in terms of big move one, are there other things that have come forward to counsel that address this? Just trying to remember. I mean, this is a general policy proposal we have in front of us, so I think that's probably a fair question. Are there, are there like larger moves that we've had that help us achieve big move one?
Well, essentially, anything that looks at increasing density and reducing the reliance on vehicles, so, yeah, any develop, any, any development along those lines would support big move one.
Okay. I think that's all for now, thanks very much, and I'll move on to the next speaker. I may have more questions regarding the climate emergency action plan. I'm gonna move on to Counselor Weave. Counselor Weave, up to five minutes.
Yeah, my first question is, who do we think will own most of this purpose-built rental, recognizing that B.C. assessment showed $100 billion gap between ownership and rental incomes in Vancouver?
Oh, we'll staff.
Thanks, Counselor Dan Garrison from Housing Policy. Generally speaking, there's a wide range of ownership of rental housing in Vancouver. We see the majority of rental is owned by a sort of small mom-and-pops and small corporations, with some, some ownership by larger organizations like real estate investment trusts and pension companies and those sorts of things. But the majority of buildings at this scale tend to be owned by smaller, smaller corporations, family businesses, and those sorts of things. Because we, because we are talking about a relatively small scale of rental building here, we're not talking about the, the really large rental buildings that tend to attract institutional investment.
Okay, and then on that, in November 26, 2019, there was amendments on looking at rental incentive programs, kind of focusing on non-market housing and other opportunities for affordable homeownership, co-housing. How are those discussions incorporated in this report?
Proposes a social housing option on arterials, so we have included a social housing option on arterials up to six stories and a slightly, slight additional bump in density of up to three FSR. So we did include that, and to the extent that there's funding from B.C. housing, I think we could see some potential take-up in that option. In terms of the affordable homeownership, those are, that's work that's not part of this, this report, but it is work that's underway as part of the Vancouver Plan process.
Okay, and then I know you talked about the commercial tenant program, which is exciting, coming back. Is there an opportunity to look at all non-rental that's four stories to go to six stories with the component with commercial tenants? Opportunities for affordable commercial tenants, is that something that we're looking at in that report?
Matt's gonna answer this question.
Hi, Counselor, thank you very much for the question. Below-market rent for, for-profit business is not something the city has typically done before, and there could be some big questions we might have to, to work through. But we will potentially, we could, we could raise that question in our workshop with, with industry that is coming up at the end of the month.
Okay, perfect, appreciate that. My next one is to Blair and the team from Coriolis. In the report, it talks about that we need to make these projects financially attractive for them to happen. What is financially attractive, and what is the percentage that we are looking to ensure that developers, like it says in the report, generate sufficient return on their investment?
Hi, Counselor Weave, Blair here. Yeah, I think our memo described it somewhat vaguely, just basically saying that we don't think the developer's gonna build a project if they can't earn some level of profit off of it. I think that's a characterization.
Yeah, it says it needs to make it financially attractive. What is that percentage?
Yeah, so, so I was just gonna mention that. So there's a variety of metrics one can use to measure profitability for a rental development. So there's internal rate of return, there's annual return on cost, there's a development profit margin if the developer built it and sold it, that would come into play. So generally speaking, what we're, what we're trying to, or what we're looking for to characterize something as viable is an IRR that's in excess of about 6%. A development yield, annual return on cost in the early days, it would be above 4%. So those are, those are sort of the typical minimum targets, and I've stressed, that's a minimum for most developers.
Okay, I appreciate that. You talked about that if properties had significant, or larger size, or larger lots, or, or in areas of the city that could have a higher rental rate, they could generate a bit more of a lift. Do you think it's appropriate that we create a CAC for these projects to ensure that?
Just that five minutes, Counselor Weave, so I'll have to leave that for your next, next round of questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I can answer that later.
I will have to leave it till the next round, and we'll go to Counselor Dejanova.
Thanks. I'm, I'm just wondering, first of all, we do get a second round of questions afterwards.
We definitely do.
Okay, so just wanted to note that, because I'd like to hear from the public, so I'll try and keep these questions brief. I'm just wondering if, if staff could tell me if they feel that, because we have been talking about the value of land, and they know that we have to consider what's in front of us for recommendations in this public hearing, but because inflation and land value has been talked about, I'd like to know if staff have assessed, because duplexes were mentioned in the presentation, if some of the recent media coverage, you know, for example, a single-family lot sold in 2019 in East Vancouver for $1.3 million duplex, house, housing built on it, each side of the duplex sold for over $1.6 million. And now neighborhood-wide, if you look at what's for sale, there, you know, most homes that would be of comparable value to that $1.3 million home now have, have renderings of a duplex up next to it, and the plate, the price is extremely inflated. So I'm just wondering if this in any way intends to curb that policy, and if in doing this, we're not making room for also considering other strategic zoning instead of blanket zoning, as we did with the duplex zoning. I understood that staff also said they keep their eye on that, but in the context of how it fits into this, as a piece in the puzzle, I'm trying to understand if this, the recommendations before us for rental are to actually curb the speculation that we're seeing right now from duplex housing and the increased values.
Uh, thank you for the question, Counselors, Dan Garrison, Housing Policy. Certainly, the, an assessment of land value being under RS or RT zoning would have been part of the work that would have been done, because of course, you know, to determine if there's any land lift, you have to first assess the, you have to first assess the going in land value or the exist, the land value of the existing zoning. But in terms of the, the approach that we're taking here, I think the, the approach is to provide clarity and certainty in terms of what can, can be built where, rather than sort of a rezoning to a site-specific or CD1 zone, where it's not necessarily clear and it's a negotiated process. We're trying to provide clarity and certainty here, both to the industry, to existing landowners, and to community members and residents around what would be considered in the C2 zones and the, and in the areas around them on and off arterial streets. And that kind of certainty and the securing of any additional density that's provided as rental is what's really intended to provide the dampening in terms of any, any land value increases we might see.
Okay, and thanks, Dan. I'm wondering for assemblies that haven't possibly, or possible assemblies, so will we see the duplex policy put that land up, so this would be farther out of reach or more expensive, especially if we're considering six-story rental now? For the cost of the, the developer or the person assembling the land to do so, they'd have to buy each of those lots at a higher price?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna perhaps ask Blair Urb to weigh in on that, just in terms of his analysis of the land value under current zoning in the RS and RT districts.
That would be great.
Do you mind?
Yeah, I'd be pleased to. Hi, Counselor Dejanova, it's Blair Urb here. Thanks for the question. So we looked fairly, very carefully at the existing value of properties that are currently zoned for RT and the single-family sites that allow duplex as part of our work. And I have to confess that I don't think we found any evidence that the duplex properties have a higher assessed value than just typical single-family properties in the same neighborhood, on the assumption they're old, you know, older duplex properties and older single-family houses. If there was a new duplex on a property, it would of course have a much higher value than an, than an older existing.
That's what I was talking about, but I only have 10 seconds left, so maybe, if you could think about answering that question on my second round after the public, that would be great. Thank you, Blair.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Thanks so much.
But I appreciate that, thank you.
Counselor Boyle, you're up next.
Thanks so much. I have a, a number of questions as well on this, and my first one is, I'm curious, staff laid out the differences between the secure rental proposal as it had come to council a year and a half ago, and then council sent it back for more consultation, and the updated version today seems to be, as staff presented, a scaled-back version. I'm curious to know why it was scaled back and why we lost potential areas to be building more rental, when it sounded as though the feedback from the consultation was, was at least equally a mix of supportive and concerned. Why did it get scaled back?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Boyle. So we, we scaled back the proposal for a number of reasons. The big one being that we really wanted to align with the Vancouver Plan principle of complete and connected neighborhoods. So we really wanted to focus the building of housing close to shopping areas. So that's why we pulled back on the, on the locations to do that. In the old, yeah, in the old AHC map, there was more opportunity along arterials that was away from local shopping areas, so we really wanted to, to pull that in and focus, focus in on that, noting that the Vancouver Plan process would have a larger conversation about change in, in the neighborhoods and in the city overall.
So might we expect later in the Vancouver Plan, I guess, then, a, a proposal for more housing choices along those arterials and perhaps added commercial, so that we have more complete communities and spread out over the city?
Absolutely. Those are the topics that are being discussed right now as part of the consultation of the Vancouver Plan.
Okay, great. I have two more questions, and the first is on land values. We have been hearing in the public a comparison between the increases in land value around very specific site-spot rezonings, and I'm wondering if our consultants can speak to the different impact that a, a site-specific spot rezoning might have on land value versus this broader citywide approach?
Hi, Counselor Royal, Blair Urb here. So you, it's so dependent, your question is so dependent on what the actual rezoning is for. So as you may be aware, you know, strata rezonings can cause enormous increases in land value. We're talking about rental rezoning in this case, which supports a much lower vet land value per square foot of density. So, you know, all I can say is our expectation is that perhaps spreading out the opportunity throughout the city may, you know, limit the focus of, of any interest in the specific location, which I think dampens speculation, if you want to use that word.
Okay.
But having said that, we just don't think that the zoning districts are gonna cause tremendous increases in property values to begin with.
Okay, that's helpful, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. And my last question is to Doug Smith. I'm wondering, understanding the strong connections between this proposal and big move one in, in the climate emergency plan, can you speak to, it's my understanding, we need all of the big moves, so if we weren't to do this piece, are we hitting our climate goals?
So short answer is no. This, this big move one at large is absolutely critical to meet our climate goals, to help complete, compact communities, and this particular proposal is a, is the first significant project that we're putting in front of council related to big move one. So yes, it is an important project related to the climate emergency action plan.
Okay, that was very clear. I appreciate that. I'll leave it there. Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, are you on mute?
Great, Counselor Carr, you're up next.
Thank you. So one of the things we've heard from the public is a concern around dropping the public hearing process around, to rezone. Can you clarify which, in which cases we would not be requiring rezoning? I mean, I heard you clearly say six-story, where there's currently six stories and, or expected in, in commercial areas, but is, which one, which areas or which of these proposals would still have to go to rezoning, which ones wouldn't?
Absolutely. So the, the areas that would still, would not require rezoning are the C2 amendments that are looking to put the six-story rental directly in the district schedules. So those will, the proposal is to no longer go through rezonings for those ones. For the rest of the changes that we're proposing along the arterials, in, in areas that are RS and RT zoned, on arterials and off arterials, all of those will still require a rezoning. It would just be a simplified rezoning.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Perfect. And the, and the one change we're making, where it's not going to rezoning, that in the C-zone, those C2 zones, they are currently all allowed six stories? As, it's just speeding up the process, is that right?
So they're allowed to go to six stories under a rezoning. So we've had policy for over 10 years to allow it through, through a rezoning. It's now allowed currently in the district schedule itself, but we're just basically putting the same densities that we've been seeing over the last 10 years into the zones.
Excellent, okay, thanks for that clarity. Have we done an inventory of the older apartment buildings along the arterials that would be affected? I'm thinking in particular Fourth Avenue, Broadway, you know, so, but, you know, there's a lot of older, very affordable apartments, wood frame buildings. You know, I think you referred to mom-and-pop ownership in, in many cases. So have we done an inventory of those buildings that might be affected by this?
So overall, in the, in terms of existing rental, we have, in the C2, there's about 3% of the, of the stock has existing rental on it. In the RS and RT areas that are eligible, there's about, again, it's about a couple of percent, it's only 3% of the entire RS, RT stock that has, that has rental in, in those applicable areas. I don't have the data on the, on the actual age in front of me.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not a, in terms of a displacement framework citywide, those, these are the areas that have the least amount of rental apartment buildings compared to, you know, the RM apartment areas.
Yeah, there's just those older buildings there. So why I'm interested in those is for a couple of reasons. One, they're very affordable. But secondly, my other question around this is, is, you know, the conclusion you're drawing that these moves are, are really in alignment with our climate emergency action plan, and I, I get that in terms of complete communities, but have we thought about the loss of embodied emissions if a, a, a large number of those buildings are knocked down for the, you know, higher, more dense, you know, arterial-based or non-arterial-based apartment buildings? for the, you know, higher, more dense, you know, arterial-based or non-arterior-based apartment buildings?
So in terms of the larger rental buildings, the rental housing stock ODP does protect our existing rental stock. And in the C2 areas, by extending the ODP, what we've done is made rental developments, you know, less viable overall in the C2 areas. So I, I think that, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at here.
Not necessarily to, to save the buildings, but to save the, the rental units, right? One-for-one replacement?
That, that's right. However, but because the, when we, when we extended the ODP to the C2 zones, what it did was it overall dampened overall development of sites that have existing rental. So, you know, those sites will be less likely to be redeveloped than they were previously before council made that decision. In terms of your other question about the embodied emissions, maybe I'll ask Doug Smith to, to comment?
Sure, thank you, Edna. So regarding the embodied carbon, whenever there is a turnover in buildings, whether it's moving from single-family to, to more density or single-family to single-family, there is an impact on body carbons. But the overall benefit over the life cycle of the buildings, because all the new buildings are going to be very low-carbon, both operationally and also from an embodied carbon perspective, the net benefit is actually positive for, for the environment. So yes, there is some material. We're doing our best to put in policies to reuse it, but there is a net carbon benefit or, or reduction by moving to a denser, newer, cleaner building.
I guess my time. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Carr. And we're on to councillor Frye. Councillor Frye, this is your second round.
That is correct, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I want to talk, ask some questions about parking, but I'm finding there's really scant material in, in the report on, on parking. And I'm curious, I mean, I see that the, I think it's the RR3s are allowing surface parking. But what is, what is the parking strategy? Have we adapted our parking strategy at all to reflect parking maximums in some of this, especially on arterials, knowing that parking's adding a big cost to construction? And while you're waiting, apologies for any confusion. I've, there's a bunch of broken links in the, in the report as well on page 83 where it, and so I'm, I'm not finding a really clear direction on what, what we're doing with parking and this proposal.
Yeah. Good evening, council. My name is Andrew. I'm with community planning. In regards to parking, the strategy that we adopted is that all of these proposals will still be under the standard parking requirements in the parking bylaw, which for secure market rental projects tend to have a lower threshold of requirements as compared to other residential uses. And then what we've done is that we've also tried to incentivize the use of the TDM measures. By tightening the locational criteria, we are enabling these projects to be in close proximity to transit, which results in a 20% discount of, on parking requirements. And then through the design guidelines, we've pointed out to implementation of TDM measures that they can do on-site to further reduce the, the requirements to an additional 40%, so 60% in total for full uptake. And what this does is that it's enabled a lot of the projects of arterial and some on arterial to be able to satisfy the parking requirements as surface parking, limiting the need for excavation, the additional cost that comes from having to do underground parking, and then the gas, greenhouse gas emissions that come from the pouring of concrete. So overall, we're trying to incentivize surface parking as a way to achieve our sustainability goals and also to reduce the cost of construction.
Right. Now, that surface parking is just on the RR3s though, right?
It would be RR3, RR2, and RR1. Sorry, RR2 and RR1. RR3s are mixed-use development. And for mixed-use development, you do need to account for delivery and servicing at the rear of the site, and most likely those will trigger underground parking because of the lack of availability of space at the rear of the sites.
Sure. Now, is there any flexibility to developments that may be on a better transit served, especially in the C areas? Where we could just say, you know what, you don't need parking at all for residential?
So the additional component to this is that the staff is also working on bringing forward to council a proposal about eliminating parking minimums, and that should be coming in, in 2022. And through the explorations that we've done of the typologies being presented to you today, we are incorporating measures to be able to align with those moves in the future.
So procedurally, would that be out of the, out of the box on, on one of these proposals? Or would it require a separate rezoning once that has been introduced in 2022?
Yeah, so currently, we are abiding to the requirements through the parking bylaw. And then once the proposal comes forward for the elimination of the parking minimums, there will be a overall like citywide amendment to the requirements that will be more in line with applying TDM measures as opposed to having minimums citywide.
So it would theoretically grandfather into what we're contemplating right now. It wouldn't require a separate rezoning process for?
Yeah, it will be implemented as part of the, the new zones and the requirements that apply to the new zones.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks. On to councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I've got two for Coriolis and one for Doug Smith, but if I can squeeze them in here in five. So for Coriolis, could you, there's been stuff in the media about how land is upzoned for rental, and then the price goes up, and then the resulting rental housing is really expensive. So can you give some examples of places where land has been rezoned, upzoned for rental, and the price of the land didn't go up?
Hi councillor, it's Blair Urb here. Yeah, I mean, we didn't look into that in detail as part of this work that we were asked to do, but yes, I can. I mean, you, you've got in, over the last couple of years, quite a number of projects that have come in in residential areas that have, like lower-density residential areas that have proposed rental housing or a mix of rental housing and below-market housing, some of which have been approved. And, and we've looked around those properties in the past, and there's no, no sign that the adjacent properties have gone up in terms of assessed values.
What about the actual property?
Well, well, sure. I mean, the property after it's completed is worth a lot more when it's got a new building on it than what it would have been worth as a, as an older, low-density residential property.
Okay. So I wanted to ask about you, you guys don't seem to like vacancy control very much. And I was wondering if you knew about the July change to the Residential Tenancy Act, which says that landlords can increase rents above the annual allowable limit for capital expenses, operating costs, and even for financing costs?
Hi councillor, I wouldn't say we don't like vacancy control. I think we're just taking that from a portion of our memo where we said that extra density would probably be required under what we're characterizing as a strict vacancy control measure. So I am aware of the changes to the Residential Tenancy Act. The, I guess the details on that would unfold over time as to whether the tenancy branch did approve rent increases because of those items that you mentioned, and, and whether that would contravene any housing agreements that the, the city had with the developer as, as part of a rezoning application. But just while I'm on this topic, our, our point is simply that vacancy, strict vacancy control does reduce the value of those units to the developer. And then because of the value reduction in the completed building, in order to maintain the viability of the project, extra density is required. And, and sometimes it's a substantial amount of extra density if it results in concrete heights over six stories.
Okay, thanks. For Doug, for Doug Smith, like I totally get that we need walkable communities for the environment. And I totally get that we need higher density in RS1 zones. But when you said, you know, the, the, the big move is that we have to have 90% of people walking to do most of their stuff, I was thinking, wouldn't it be great if we could have a big move where 90% of residents had enough money to be able to afford the expensive rental that's going into these areas? So how do you integrate the equity part of this big move? Because it's, it's looking like the staff isn't expecting very many of the units to be non-market housing or even below-market housing.
Right. So I, I can talk about equity in sustainability in general, and then maybe I'll pass it over to, to Dan to carry on about how we looked at it.
Have a minute.
Proposal. But we do have a climate and equity working group, an external subject matter experts who give us advice on all of our climate policies to make sure that we're not missing anything, not doing harm, and ideally making things better for, for low-income people who need more support.
Just 30 seconds.
Okay, that's Dan Garrison trying to, maybe I'll just add, we have built in, to the extent it's possible, under the forms of development that are being proposed here under six-story, if the maximum of six-story buildings, as much affordability as can be generated in the below-market options. But we've also included and created additional opportunities that we're proposing here for nonprofits that could come in to build social housing projects. So to some extent, the take-up of these policies and how much affordable housing gets delivered through these policies will be dependent on the activities of the nonprofit community housing sector, funding from senior levels of government, and, and the usual things that we look for to try to partner. But this, these policies and zoning amendments do create a framework that, that that funding could come into to create more affordability.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Weave.
Yeah, my first question is to Blair. Recognizing that you did talk about there could be a little bit of a large lift on higher rental rate areas and larger lots, do you think it's smart for us to move forward with a CAC target, target contribution charge that's extremely minimal? And that staff could kind of, in their annual inflationary rate adjustments, change those to ensure that we are capturing the land lift to deliver the amenities we need in the neighborhoods?
Hi councillor, Blair here again. So we talked to staff about that at length. And, and what was determined is that in the locations where the pol, the policy would allow six-story rental, particularly the six-story mixed-use rental where the densities can be quite high, although those do include a requirement for below-market rental housing, we did identify some instances where we think there's extra land lift beyond, beyond just the, the below-market rental housing inclusion. And so I, I do believe that the staff report has rec, has identified that all six-story buildings would still go through the city's CAC process.
But do you think it'd be smart for us to do a CAC target contribution, even if it was like at a garage rate of $1.8 per square meter? Just so that we'd have a mechanism that if we started to see changes in the industry or changes in the performas, that we'd be able to raise accordingly so that we could deliver the amenities that we need?
Yeah, so the, it's a good question. The difficulty with that, I think, is it would have to be in, if it was going to be introduced, it would have to be on a very neighborhood-specific or almost block-specific charge, because the ability of these projects to support any CAC is highly dependent on the location of the rental project. So that would be the, the, make it cumbersome is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand that. My next question is to staff. Recognizing that we are going to be doing DCL waivers for about 50% of these projects and no CACs, and we're already struggling to meet our infrastructure needs to be those complete communities, can you talk about how we are going to fund this growth?
So in terms of funding for growth, I do know that rental projects do pay the UDCL now. And so they are paying for important infrastructure and utility upgrades. In terms of the DCLs, when you look at the overall amount that's waived, it accounts for 4% of the overall DCL revenue collected that's waived. And that, you know, that has helped to create over 3,500 units of rental. In terms of funding for growth, that is something that we're looking at through the 10-year DCL review that's underway currently. So looking at how, you know, how do we pay for growth with our DCLs at the allocations? So all of that work is currently underway as well. This is a topic of the Vancouver Plan process to develop a public investment framework. And so, you know, looking at how do we pay for growth and what other sources of funding are available out there is, is a topic of, of the Vancouver Plan process.
Okay, my next question is, we talked about a, a limited assembly controls. Do we have an opportunity to charge for land assemblies to capture some of that? When we are talking about, we're seeing obviously a lot of land assembly signs around the city and people capturing a huge amount of land lift when they do create assemblies. So do we have a funding mechanism for land assemblies? And what does that look like?
Hi councillor Dan Garrison. The, really, the, the funding tools that we have are, are the primarily DCLs and CACs. We don't have the land assembly tool. One of the things I would note is that from a perspective of a developer trying to build properties, there can actually be land assembly premiums where it, it's actually more difficult for them to assemble sites. And so I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that from a development perspective, it, it's, it's necessarily more viable, except that you, that you can enable additional density by putting a larger development site together. So I'm not sure that we have a mechanism to do that other than through the, the DCLs and, and community amenity contribution.
That's fine. Thank you so much. Back on the list, and I had more questions about Big Move One. So now I'm getting the, the connection with, with Big Move One in a, in a general sense in terms of the Climate Emergency Action Plan. But I'm wondering if staff can explain, how does this actually help lower our carbon emissions? Like how, how will this, if we make this change and neighborhoods change in the way that are being proposed in this staff report, how will that actually help reduce our emissions?
Doug Smith, sustainability. So off the top of my head, there's three ways the Big Move One helps reduce emissions. One is the compact complete communities. It reduces the reliance on vehicles. People can walk and cycle and take transit more, which is more affordable, but also reduces emissions because cars produce greenhouse gases. The second thing is by accelerating how quickly buildings are replaced. We're putting new buildings in place that are much greener, so they have lower, lower operating emissions than the current buildings. A large, older, single-family home will, will have significantly more emissions, especially per person in that home than a brand-new apartment building. And then thirdly is embodied emissions. We're getting really good at looking at embodied emissions and ensuring that all new construction minimizes the, the embodied emissions like concrete and steel going into a building. And so that will also reduce life cycle emissions through these types of form of development. So those are the three main reasons.
Thanks. And when I lived in the UK, when I was doing my PhD, I had a choice from living close to my university or living way out in the suburbs. But my friends who chose that and bought a car quickly abandoned their cars and moved to the center of the city. Is that kind of the thinking where we, where equity might come into this too? Is that if you're able to live closer to your work and not out in, in the suburbs, this may actually reduce your day-to-day living costs?
Yes, absolutely. One of the earlier studies done by TransLinkin that living in Vancouver can often be less expensive than living in the suburbs because of your transportation costs, your fuel costs, or even the need not to have two cars or even one car. So there is a significant equity piece by building dense, compact communities.
Right. And so for this proposal, we're looking at putting more density in commercial areas. That is, you know, four to six-story buildings, but with commercial underneath. And then behind those, the street behind is actually putting in slightly more, more density in that. So that's what you're saying will make the complete kind of walkable neighborhoods is, is folks living around that commercial space?
Absolutely. It will allow people to live, play, and shop, and do as much as possible locally as possible, as opposed to driving to a mall or driving to a different municipality to do what they need. As opposed to driving to a mall or driving to a different municipality to do what they need to do. So yes.
Thanks. And I was struck by how you answered councillor Boyle's last question was about that. I just didn't quite catch all of it. You were saying that this is the first. For big move one, this is the first large proposal we have to address that and and it's essential. I just wondering if he could. Just for a fresh memory on that one.
Correct, yes. For, yes, this is one of the first big, this is probably, this is the first big. Decision we'll have to make that will support big move one. There's going to be multiple other ones that'll come up later, Broadway, Jericho, other big. Density, but as far as a major new policy, this one is one that is important towards big move one and the first one.
Okay, thanks so much for your time and councillor Boyle's up next. This will be end our first round of questions.
Thanks. I I think I just have one more question, which is I'm curious, you know, a lot of conversation about. About embodied carbon, about displacement. If council doesn't approve this policy, I assume it doesn't mean. Things stay the same as is forever. So what is likely to happen along these stretches? If we don't approve this policy?
So if we don't approve this policy. Six story rentals in C twos can still go ahead, but it would be under a longer rezoning process. In the RS and RT areas, it's important to note that the affordable housing. Choices interim rezoning policy closed officially closed. And and twenty nineteen. So there would be no more opportunity to entertain any new rental projects in those RS and RT areas. So the kind of development you would see would continue to be the tearing down and rebuilding of. Single family houses and duplexes and laneways.
Okay, and on the arterials, rental could still go ahead, but with a rezoning. Am I right in remembering that what we're largely see seeing currently being built on those stretches is four story condo?
So that's right. So in the C two areas, the four story condos would continue to go ahead as they do now under existing zoning. So, you know, without a rezoning. And then in the C two areas. There's still a door for six story rental, but they would have to go through a rezoning process. And then nothing on the arterial streets that are not zoned C two that are RS and RT, there wouldn't be a door in to do any more rentals there.
Okay, so without this policy, likely what we would continue to see. More of is single family or duplex and condos and and.
That's right.
Like possibly still with still with displacement and still with demolition and the. And the, I guess you could call a waste embodied carbon from that demolition, but just with the result being new housing that is. Condos and single family rather than rental?
That's correct. Yeah. And that that is the dominant form of development now.
Okay. I will leave it there. Thanks.
Thanks very much councillor Boyle. Okay, council, that's two rounds of questions. No one else on the list. Staff need to do some sanitation in the. In the chambers in order to for COVID and speakers coming in. So we're going to take a ten minute break and we'll be back at. Eight oh, let's say eight oh five. Be back at eight oh five. Clerks, I understand we have a presentation for the first speaker, Mark White.
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Are we, I'm at eight oh five. Are we ready to go? We have quorum.
Yes, we have quorum.
Great. Okay, thanks so much. So council, we're moving now to hear from public speakers. And we're going to start with a public body representative, Mark White, who is the co-chair of the seniors advisory committee. And he has a presentation. Please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and councillors, for the opportunity to speak. As a resident living in Vancouver, I live on the traditional ancestral and unceded. Territories of Musqueam, Squamish and Salatooth nations. As noted, I'm the co-chair of the seniors advisory committee and was nominated to speak. On their behalf, in opposition to the recommendations in the report as they currently stand. The next slide, please. City council has a unique opportunity to use upzoning as an important tool to advance affordable. Inclusive and accessible housing. That's desperately needed across all neighborhoods in Vancouver. As noted by Mark Lee from CCPA. The city could better use its jurisdictional powers to incentivize and invest in non-market housing. Unfortunately, the proposed report does not directly or indirectly support. Any social value aspirations linked to the actual creation of significant affordable housing for seniors. People with disabilities, nor will this rental housing. Be relevant to over seventy percent of the population who cannot afford the CMHC median market rental rates. In their neighborhood, nor the ten percent discount or twenty percent discount. Noting that the city staff report showed that over the past decade, there's been a seventy five percent increase. In market rentals. Rates. Although it is true that the plan provides an opportunity to increase social housing, it doesn't provide sufficient levers to actualize the aspiration. Based on the current CMHC and stats Canada data, there's strong evidence that rapidly increasing unaffordable housing supply. Has long term negative impacts. Slide three, please. Rapid building of unaffordable housing stock contributes to higher construction costs. And results in higher CMHC median market rental thresholds in the neighborhood. This indirectly results in landlords increasing rents at vacancy to match current rental conditions. Premature demolition results in the land assemblies which increase land value and results in the loss of affordability. That can never be replaced by new housing. Preservation, reuse and retrofit need to be prioritized over demolition. Unless there's guaranteed non-market housing created that's de-linked from market forces. And lastly, the current proposal lacks a clear set of mixed income principles. And targets that address social justice, diversity, inclusion and reconciliation. Locations on or near arterial hubs should be used to exemplify innovations in vegetative barriers to reduce nanoparticle pollution. Create accessible pathways to support social inclusion across income ranges. Age ranges, ethno-cultural, sexual orientation and reconciliation. I provided the city clerk with some additional slides that provide evidentiary support that a change in paradigm is needed. And if we can just sort of run through the next few slides till we get to slide seven. And I leave that for councillors to review. In conclusion, SAC recommends that city council has a unique opportunity to use upzoning as an effective tool to increase the provision of affordable, inclusive, accessible. Non-marking market housing. SAC recommends that council request city staff to explore fundamental changes to ensure that a minimum of twenty five percent of any upzoning. Will contribute to the provision of this type of non-market housing within each neighborhood. Linked to social innovation and inclusion. of this type of non-market housing within each neighborhood linked to social innovation and inclusion. A new paradigm is needed and current evidence is clear. As I spoke earlier about, that new market rental increases construction costs, escalates land values, although I'm hearing some contradictory evidence there or suggestions, but it excludes seniors and seventy percent of the people living in Vancouver. So I would recommend that that council challenge city staff in collaboration with nonprofit community partners to create a new paradigm. And I remind them that it's important to consider complete communities must represent all income ranges in the city and the need for low-income workers to work in the businesses that are there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You do have questions. Councillor Carr, up for three minutes.
Great. Good to see you in chambers. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So my first question is, it's around the statement you made that the goal should be to increase social housing, but there are no tools. So what are the tools that you want the city to acquire or work towards with other governments that can achieve more social housing?
So I think Mark Lee, when during the Vancouver 2050 panel, had discussed some opportunities which could be around whether or not DCLs and CACs are the appropriate vehicles and they may or may not be, or but could be converted into investment into non-market housing. There, so I leave the suggestions of what those levers could be, although it appears from experts that I'm not, that there might be important innovative levers that really address the need for social inclusion. And to, to make hay with the few levers that the city has in actually trying to build non-market housing in the city.
You also made a statement, thank you for that. You've also made the statement that we, that retrofit fits should be prioritized over new builds. Has the committee discussed, you know, how we achieve that? Like, what are the tools? Are they, is it pace financing? Is it just grants from the federal government or the provincial government? You know, what's been your discussion around how to achieve those retrofits, especially the energy efficient ones?
Right. Well, I know that with the past housing minister that we had discussions with, that, that environmental upgrades were considered as being potential for both provincial, the provincial government, but also as part of the housing, the federal housing strategy. I also think that there is seniors as a growing demographic. I've got a unique opportunity for council, if we had a seniors planner, to, to actually look at opportunities of working with the federal and provincial government to actually turn some of those areas into seniors housing, which makes a lot of sense because it's close to a community amenity, shopping and public transportation.
And is there a desire for my last question, is there a desire that's been expressed from the seniors advisory committee for purpose-built seniors housing, social housing or more mixed into other developments?
I think that there's, there's the whole range and we need transitional housing. We know that seniors right now are the fastest growing demographics of those at risk for shelters or homelessness or, or in fact homeless. So I think that we really need a whole spectrum, seniors, and that looks at other opportunities, co-equity opportunities, secondary suites for family, et cetera. So I think that there's a whole range that we, that needs to be explored. But specific to this plan, I think that there are opportunities to create a portion of that housing in an upzoning so that developers invest in non-market housing, at least twenty-five percent. I know that Mark Lee was suggesting thirty-three percent.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you. And by extension to you and your committee members for the service you're doing to the city.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, you may be on mute, but I can go ahead.
Okay, only done that twice tonight. How old are you councillor, boy?
Long day. No, it's all good. Yeah, okay. Thank you so much for being here, Mark. I just wanted to actually, you sort of, I think maybe in the interest of time, moved quite quickly through a number of slides that had an enormous amount of data on them. I wonder if you just wanted to take a second to recap what's in the slides, particularly the market rental and percentage increase of market rental housing.
Right, yeah. Well, what I have actually is in the slides, on slide four, it shows October eighteenth and October nineteenth figures from CMHC market rental data. And it, and it's by year of construction. And so it typically shows that construction prior to nineteen sixty, that there's, there's a thirty percent difference in affordability between older builds and, and new builds. And that's for bachelors, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom.
Okay. Okay. And I wonder if on slide five, you can talk about zone three and zone eight that you've flagged as being the highest increase between the periods. And I appreciate staff have brought these slides up, so that's helpful. So on slide five.
Right, yes. So on slide five, you can see, for instance, in zone three, which is downtown and zone eight, Mount Pleasant, you'll see a rapid increase in build during the last, between two thousand and one and twenty sixteen. So that you're rapidly increasing less affordable supply in a region or in a neighborhood. And that causes the CMHC market rental threshold for that neighborhood to increase as well. If we go to the next slide, you can see this is now only between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty, so it's a different period of time. But you can see within downtown and Mount Pleasant, they have some of the highest increases in market rentals, thresh, market rentals, median market rental in between those two periods. And there would need to be more research done to look at it from a causative perspective, but from a descriptive statistical perspective, which is all you really get with Stats Canada. There are strong, it's, it's fairly strong evidence that there is something going on there.
Okay, great. That's, that's really helpful. I'm, just a quick follow-up question. And we've discussed this at length since we've been considering this report over the last couple of years. But I'm just curious, it's sort of the notion that, well, if we have the, the tenant relocation policy in place, then council could feel comfortable with the fact that if affordable rental in the C2 zones, and it causes displacement, that we've got the regulatory framework set up to protect those tenants. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, when you actually, when you look at the demographic need and you look at seniors, senior-led households are currently around twenty-one percent and, and are estimated to be twenty-five percent of the demographics in the city of Vancouver by twenty forty-one. We're not, the idea of a one-to-one replacement of affordability does nothing. It really, it only keeps the status quo. It doesn't, there's no trickle-down effect with unaffordable housing supply. It does not work towards complete communities. You will not have workers being able to afford to live in those communities. And therefore, the projections of the impact of greenhouse gases, I think, is suspect.
Okay. And just a yes or no, I assume you got this presentation from staff at the seniors advisory committee?
Sorry, we're just, I've said.
Is it yes or no?
No, it was just online.
Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Hardwick. Up to five.
Thanks very much, Mark. One of your slides, the headline was data-driven evidence to inform decision-making. Is that important?
Yes, I think it's the only way that we can actually move forward is through good data. And I think that there has been some very good data presented by city staff. But what has not been presented are solutions. And so I think there, yes, there may be some data gaps that would be great to close up. But I, I do think that city staff have done a tremendous job in, in, in providing data, but not necessarily in providing the innovation needed and creativity needed to actually solve the problems of affordable housing in the city of Vancouver for seniors, but also for seventy percent of the population that can't really afford CMHC current market rental values, whether that's ten percent off or even twenty percent off.
I know that CMHC have also noted data gaps. But riffing off of something that councillor Carr asked earlier, what might be some opportunities to expand non-market housing in the context of the proposal from your perspective?
Well, I think one of the most fantastic things that has happened with city council now is the hiring of your new deputy manager that has thirty-seven years' experience with BC Housing. And I think that through that city manager and through collaboration with non-house, nonprofit housing providers, that, that there could be more innovation created. And I, and I strongly urge that there's an opportunity for that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a few questions for you. Thank you so much for coming in, your service to the city. Just kind of a broad question for you first. If you were thinking of buying a house, where do you think the most expensive houses are in the city?
Well, I think for most people, it would be anywhere.
Really? On the downtown east side, the same price as, say, West Point Gray?
No, no, I think that there are differences, that there are differences. But I'm not sure how that relates to the question at hand, maybe.
Oh, I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
Thank you so much.
Right. So, so we're not really having a debate between the status quo and adding rentals to particular parts of the city. It's a debate between these, these parts of the city that are already zoned to develop strata, high-priced strata, or if we make these changes, we're able to bring market rental and some below, you know, a good portion of below-market rental to these areas. So that's really the choice on all these public hearings when we're talking about rental.
Yes.
Would you agree?
Not exactly, because I think that my understanding of creating complete communities is it would be neighbourhood actual involvement and looking at what their felt needs are. When I look at Dunbar, for instance, I see a dying community in terms of businesses having difficulty finding workers and young people moving out of the Dunbar region because they can't afford to buy houses there. So I see an emptying out. I'm just using that as an example. And I think what we need to do is, is to really engage, and I know there's been resistance in some areas around nonprofit housing. But I think that there are wonderful opportunities to actually have discussions and to, around what complete communities could mean in their region and what, and what would that look like?
Okay. So what would a complete community look like in Dunbar?
I think that, that it would basically have a full mix of income ranges.
Right.
And that, we also know in Dunbar that there's an aging community. And so that there would be alternatives for people to either stay in their home and, and have secondary suites or students living there, or to right-size and look at opportunities of moving some of that into non-market housing. I know of seniors in the Dunbar area, for instance, that we've had discussions with, that have said, I don't need three point two million dollars if I was to sell my house. I would gladly sell it for a million dollars and donate and get a tax credit for the balance and put it into a land trust.
Well, that's, that's great. I have another question about climate change. We've been told by staff earlier this evening that the biggest move we have to make in our climate emergency action plan is big move one, which is create complete communities. And this is the very first proposal we put forward to get us partway there. So does that at all influence how you think about this?
I think it's a fantastic vision. I think that all that we need to do is to be able to actually have the, to provide the affordable housing that will capture the diversity that's necessary in order to make a complete community.
Okay. So, but if our choices, say on Thursday, we're voting yes or no to this, and this is the biggest choice we have in front of us for, to address climate change in terms of big step one, walkable communities, you would still think we should vote against it?
I think it should be sent back to city staff and as I, as the recommendation was, to, to engage the new city manager with BC Housing experience, to involve the nonprofit housing community in discussions and to look at possibly some opportunities to really change the paradigm as was suggested by some of the consultants during the twenty fifty panel.
Okay. Thanks so much. That's my five minutes, but I really appreciate you coming in this evening. Thanks. You have councillor Fry for five minutes.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, hi, Mark. Thanks for joining us. You mentioned not subscribing to the idea of, of, of the trickle-down sort of theory. And I'm inclined to agree with you that this notion that if we build more market housing, it will somehow trickle down. But that being said, I just saw somebody posted on Twitter, five hundred new Amazon jobs being hired, which presumably won't be filled locally. So there are going to be new people coming to our city. We've got burgeoning, all sorts of big industries that are, that are happening in Vancouver and attracting new people who have more money. So I'm curious where you see the role for new market rentals to be built and, and where in the city and how we should be. This is disaggregating the notion that it will filter down to where it comes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think what I would do i- if I was in the city's shoes and, and has been done elsewhere, Whistler being one, is looking at opportunities for businesses to invest in housing, in affordable housing for their employees. And I think that there's great opportunity there to look at it from a non-market perspective as well. So I think that there are some creative ways of going about it. I don't think using housing as a commodity in this type of market is working for people living in Vancouver.
Nope, don't, don't disagree with you there, although it's not like we have funders beating their, beating our doors down to build non-market housing either. So it's a bit of a delicate balance, but I totally appreciate you joining us and sharing your perspective.
Thank you so much. And I really appreciate all the councillors' efforts.
Thank you. That's it for questions. And we're going to move on to the next speaker. Again, thank you so much for your work and, and coming in this evening. We're going on to the next speaker. And sorry, just getting my list ready here, councillor. Okay. No rats. It just got buried in my email. Sorry, councillor, I'm just looking for my next, there we go. Okay, we've got David Sander, who's next? David Sander, up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Stuart, members of council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead. Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Terrific. Thank you for listening to my comments this evening. I'm a director at Halliburton Properties and a resident of Vancouver. I presently do not own any property that is affected by this proposed rezoning and public hearing. And so tonight, I just wanted to come and share a few of my thoughts. And that is that I do support the work by staff and what they've put forward today. It builds on extensive work the city has done in recent years around rental housing. And we all know that Vancouver is facing an affordability crisis. It's very pervasive and it affects all sorts of people in the city and all types of housing, and that includes rental housing. More than half of this city rents. And these improvements to the Vancouver rental policies will create diversity of new rental housing. Roughly 4,000 new rental units over 10 years is significant. When you look at, the city of Vancouver has achieved roughly around 1,000 or little under rental units, or year-over-year in recent years. And that's looking at the total rental universe as measured by CMHC. So these changes represent, you know, roughly 400 rental units, which is a year, which is a significant number and a strong path forward to allow for more rental in many neighbourhoods across the city. The proposal today will put policy into action by making important changes to streamline the delivery of rentals, allowing six stories in the C2 zones and introducing standardised rental zones in lower-density areas. Both of these changes mean that builders like myself can build new rental homes faster than before. As a builder, I want to be part of the solution and see new and existing Vancouverites be able to find a home in many neighbourhoods across this city. These modest changes will encourage vibrant neighbourhoods and make positive changes for our ability as an industry to deliver new rental housing. So I encourage council to adopt these proposals, these changes. And Mayor Stewart, I think you touched on an important point earlier in your comments in that in many of these locations, developers and builders can already build there. It's incentivising them to build six stories of rental instead of four stories of condo. And that's an important point. And, you know, I'd like to conclude that, you know, the discussion around affordability is a very deep and important one, and we need more housing. We need more of all types of housing, more social housing, more below-market rental housing, more affordable-for-ownership housing, more co-op housing. You know, the list goes on and on, and yes, we need more rental housing. These policies that are before you tonight address rental housing predominantly. And just because they don't address those other types and tenures of housing that we do need as deeply as you may wish is not a reason to reject the policy that's before you, because we do need more rental housing. And I think, I hope that council sees that and votes for this change in policy direction. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You have a question from councillor Weave. Councillor Weave?
Yeah, thanks a lot for coming to speak today and give your perspective. I'm wondering, as someone that does build, are you happy with an IRR of 6%? Or what is your company policy for what you try to achieve when doing a project like this?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And in recent years, it's just that that number's been falling lower and lower and lower. And if people can deliver 6% IRR, I mean, I don't know what I'm doing wrong, but I can't get there. And, you know, I think that speaks to just how hard it is to unlock the site. And there was some conversation earlier about landless going up. You know, I look at this, and land is just so extremely expensive in this city that it makes it hard to unlock the sites for redevelopment. So the IRR, to answer your question directly, and what we like, I mean, if we can get 4%, we're pretty happy with that. The, I don't think that this policy is going to spur enormous amounts of development that are going to increase enormous amounts of land or unlock huge amounts of land and push land values up. I just don't see that happening. I think it will help unlock a few sites. But developers aren't going to be there with six-figure checks over and above the assessed value or the asking price. It's going to take, it's still going to take activity on our part to make the projects work.
And I liked your talk about how you want to build these complete communities. And one of the things we need is the amenities. So I'm wondering, as the development community, do you think you're more receptive to having the CAC target contributions, even if they're small, knowing that some of the value will go back into that community to deliver the amenities that the residents need?
Yeah, speaking on behalf of myself only, I get really nervous around that conversation because just having the conversation of what an appropriate CAC is can take a year. And a big part of that...
That's why I was saying, if it's a target contribution, so you know beforehand that it's only going to be $2 per square metre, and it's a nominal amount or a smaller amount, but you know prior to going into that, there's no risk of having to do a negotiation or anything? Is that preferred than going through the negotiated process?
Like, my sense is there's not enough spad in this policy that could justify that. In theory, having a fixed CAC, I think, is a terrific idea. When I look at this policy specifically, I just, I don't know that there's going to be enough juice there for that.
Okay, thanks a lot for coming to speak today.
Thanks. That's it for questions. Really appreciate you coming in this evening. Thanks. We're going to move on to our next speaker, who is Helen Louis, speaker number two.
Hi, Mayor and council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Helen, and I support this policy. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep, keep going.
Oh, sorry. My name's Helen. I support this policy because I know that it'll add much-needed rental and affordable rental. I've been a resident of Vancouver for over 10 years. I've watched friends and family move away despite growing up here just because they don't have wealthy parents who can give them down payments or were lucky enough to have been born 40 years ago. I also work for a nonprofit organisation that builds and operates affordable housing, and I see firsthand the shortage of affordability. When we have projects completed, I see over four times the amount of interested applicants. These are people who are students, their families, they're single parents with children, seniors, people with disabilities, and many others. But this also includes people who make way over the targeted income, and that's because they themselves can't find secure, affordable housing despite making substantial household incomes. So I don't speak from my employer, but I do speak from my own experience. And I know that this policy will bring more affordability because it's what I do. I first heard about this policy in 2018, and since then, I've already had the affordability and feasibility of two projects affected due to the delay in enacting this policy. Both of these projects were partnerships with other local nonprofits and community organisations to bring secured below-market rentals. They are the exact type of projects that I think many on this council advocate for and say that we need more of. But because the policy was delayed so many times, both projects and affordability were impacted. Both were waiting on the outcome of this policy. One of the projects became too costly for the nonprofit to continue waiting and had to be sold. A second project, instead of waiting, is now doing a rezoning, which means more cost, more risk, and less affordability in the rent. I'm sure that there are many other examples that have been made no longer feasible or delayed due to lack of action and lack of incentivisation for affordable rental. And that's because the current conditions make it really unfeasible to develop affordable housing. There are many nonprofits and organisations out there that want to bring affordable housing to Vancouver, but they can't do it alone because of high costs. Organisations like nonprofits are being asked to pay nearly the same cost but then deliver below-market results. The city's fee waivers are helpful, but often the total of these fees are less than 5% of all the costs required to deliver a project. Provincial and federal governments are already helping with low-cost financing and grants. Municipal governments need to do their part and remove the roadblocks. If council is really serious about adding affordability, then they need to support the existing organisations that are already doing this, and that's what this policy does. Affordable housing providers are telling you that they need municipal support and saying that this is how you can support them deliver affordable housing. And so there's many people that can claim that we can tweak or revise, but they are probably also people who haven't suffered the impact of unaffordable housing for a long time or possibly ever. Doing nothing or sending this back to staff means people, more people without homes, and it means more of the status quo, which is not affordable. So I fully support this council, and I urge council to prove it if they are serious about helping nonprofits and similar organisations deliver secure, below-market, affordable housing. Thank you.
Thanks so much. There's a number of questions for you, including from me. So I'm just going to start quickly. Sorry, I was just, wanted to make sure I heard clearly what you said, is that you were working on two nonprofit rental housing developments that would have fallen in these zones, but because of delay, one has been sold off now to a market developer, and the other one is going to be more expensive because of it has to go through rezoning. Is that right?
That is right, yes.
And on the one that was sold off to the market developer, are they just going to build condos in its place?
I'm not too sure, unfortunately. But I do know that it was sold to, yeah, the land had to be sold, yeah.
Okay, thanks so much for that. Councillor Hardwick, you're up for five minutes.
I'm just curious, you do work in the property development industry?
Yes, in the property, yes.
I was just curious why you didn't state that in the opening. Most of the people that are speaking from the industry have indicated they are titled an organisation. Was there a reason that you didn't do that?
Just, speaker, you don't have to answer these questions if you feel them inappropriate.
Okay, I want to state that this is my second time calling into a public hearing. So if there's like a process that I'm not following, then I'm sorry that I wasn't aware. I think part of it is like, many young people who don't typically call in, it can be really intimidating, but, you know, like, I hope that more people can call in and that it's not always the same people who kind of know how it all works. But that, it wasn't intentional, sorry, to answer your question.
Thanks, speaker. I'm just going to stop the councillor's timer here. Again, it probably is my fault. I should reiterate the rules that councillors or myself will ask you questions, but you're under no obligation to answer them. And when you register to speak, you're just required to include your name and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver. That's all that's required. Back to you, councillor Hardwick.
Thanks for clarifying.
But nevertheless, this is someone that has indicated that they are employed and in the property development industry and is certainly aware of it. But I will just leave it there, but I think the point has been made. Thank you.
Councillor Kirby.
Yeah, thanks for calling in today. The mayor had asked my first question about the two projects, but I just wanted to, sorry, my voice is a bit dry. I just wanted to clarify, did I hear you correctly that you said you work with a nonprofit?
Yes, I work for a nonprofit developer.
Okay, and what type of projects do you typically work on? If I may ask, is it nonprofit rental, social housing combination?
It ranges depending on the municipality, but most of it is middle, missing-middle housing for people who, it's, yeah, either, sorry, it's usually just below-market rents.
Right, so like, that's your entire goal, is to deliver below-market housing where possible? And you have expertise, you work in that area every day?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time to call in to council.
Thanks. Councillor Weave, you're up next. My mic on mute.
Yeah, thanks for coming. It's great to get new speakers and new perspectives and young voices, so I appreciate your calling today. I'm wondering, does this report, to your point, tilt to the non-market? Like, is there abilities or what can this council do to ensure that our policies are allowing more non-market housing, recognising that's our biggest need? Are there elements to this you think we could do more to help support the non-market delivery of affordable housing?
I think that we could do more to support non-market affordable housing by making this policy more widespread and apply to more areas and sites. But I understand that there's probably its own challenges with doing that.
And is there...
As it stands, I know that, no, sorry.
No, keep going.
I was just going to say, as it stands right now, it already adds benefit and options for nonprofit organisations to build more affordably.
Okay, and recognising that there's a lot of incentives for market rental as well, do you think that we should continue to find more ways to incentivise non-market? Recognising that it seems to be, we also incentivise market rental at a pretty high rate with a lot of waivers and a lot of federal and provincial funding?
I think that both are needed. I can't speak to the experience of working in a market rental because I haven't done that before. But I know that just from the experience of seeing the types of applicants that do apply to my projects, it's clear that not only below-market is needed, but regular market rental is needed for those folks as well who don't qualify for the projects that I work on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming to speak today.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I think that's it for questions. Oh, nope, councillor Bly is there. Up to five minutes, councillor Bly.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks to speaker Helen for coming in. Actually, I'm just curious, engagement is a big topic around this report and this decision before council. And I'm just curious how you came to hear about this report coming to public hearing tonight? And what was your sort of, yeah, well, I guess that's the first question, is how'd you come to hear about the report?
I am, of this year, signed up for updates from the city website that distributes that information about different planning updates. To be honest, other than my own post-public hearings on my own projects that I attend, I previously haven't always been so engaged. So it's only been recently that I've been following this planning work more closely, and especially for this specific one, it's just because it was discussed with staff on the projects that it impacted, the ones that had delays because of this policy delay. So that's how I heard about it.
Okay, but just to clarify, those projects were strictly non-market?
Correct.
Okay, so it was sort of, I hear, so like, maybe there was like a suggestion that there is a policy that could solve for that?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm just trying to connect the dots on how a potential policy that's coming before council, what I'm getting, what I'm hearing is that sort of the delays and what have you, maybe there was a discussion with staff, it's sort of less important. What I'm just curious about is how people are hearing about this report and how others are not, and the disconnect there, because that's a major point of contention, I would say, that we're hearing between industry folks and then perhaps residents that are...
Okay, I understand.
So I'm just trying to make, connect the dots on that. If you have anything else to offer, that's great. Otherwise, I appreciate your responses.
Yeah, I do have one point to add for that. I think that I probably heard about this report due to my work and otherwise, like, for example, peers in my age or people that I know that don't work in the industry would not otherwise have known about this or would come and speak.
Right, that's what I'm thinking too. Okay, thanks. I'll leave it there. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, councillor Bly. That is it for questions. Thank you so much for participating tonight. And we're going to move on to our next speaker, who is in-person council. So this may take a few minutes, a few seconds anyway, to get everything set up. But we have speaker number three, Michael Mortensen. And let the clerk signal to me when everything's ready to go. And then our next speaker, speaker number four, Michael Brown, is also in person. So we may have to clean the stations in between speakers, so just to let council know. And whenever clerks can... And whenever clerks give me the high sign, we're.
Speaker three, yeah, speaker three is ready to go.
Great, okay, thanks very much. Welcome this evening and you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Do I have a presentation up? I sent one in.
Just check with clerks.
Clerk says not received a presentation.
Okay, I think I sent one in, but that's okay. I can, I can speak extemporaneously. Yeah, Michael Mortensen, I've lived in Vancouver since 1989. I've been a renter, I've been an owner. I currently don't live in Vancouver at the moment. I'm just residing out of the city for the next little bit, coming back. I run a development consulting company called Livable City Planning. I am a developer. I'm a developer of market housing and non-market housing. Currently, I have about 5,000 units in planning throughout the metro region, so I'm a housing expert. And and I think, you know, how interesting, I just want to congratulate, you know. Echo the comments of Helen and really compliment her on her fine testimony to you. And I really suggest to you, like, wouldn't it be interesting if every single new, single detached dwelling application? Would have to go through this process with council to justify approval of a single detached house? It'd be really interesting if we inverted this question. How is it that we put rental housing through this grilling process? Right, when in fact, we have this other 60% of our city that gets approved and rubber stamped. 300, you know, how many, the most square footage is being developed now in Vancouver by far, by area are single detached homes. Replacing old single detached homes with no net new addition to the housing stock. 60% of our city is locked into a single family use. It with houses that are 2 million, 3 million, 4 million, $5 million that are affordable based on income to less than 5% of Vancouver families. How is it that we're subjecting rental housing to this kind of grilling? I think we need to flip that on its head, but I'm just gonna get really quick to the meat of this, though. But I definitely support this policy. I think it is a modest incentive to create new rental. It is working. If you want data, if you're the frog in the pot who wants data, look around, look at the rental rate, the vacancy rate. Look at the new supply of rental housing, which for 40 years has been absent in our city, which is just turning on now with some of council's. Incentives through the through the last few years. So it is working. We are getting new rental housing. And and we need to continue it. So I wanted to implore you to trust the experts that you have on your staff. In your planning department, in your real estate department, they have scrutinized the data, they have scrutinized the pro formas. You have objective third-party consultants, you have reports from Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, who I work for in affordable housing. I am building market and non-market housing, and I know how razor thin the margins are for rental housing. We need to incent rental. We need to give rental vitamin D, vitamin density. To balance the playing field between condo uses and rental uses. There's been tons of consultation on this, on this, this, this policy. It's been in, it's been in the media and it's been before council for years. And this is a modest move. I just wanted to say that that the the forms of housing that your staff reports sketch out can be completely integrated within the DNA of all of our neighborhoods. We can still have leafy neighborhoods with lovely landscaping and charming homes. They're just going to be a little more dense, a little taller. But that the the forms of development are completely compatible and appropriate in on on the arterial roads that we have. And within the internal areas of our city. I think we need to go further. I think we need to rezone areas around parks for multifamily. De facto, as of right, you know, why, why should those areas in high amenity parts of our city? Be the sole domain of single detached dwellings affordable to less than 5% of our families based on income? So this is a question of equity, economic equity. It's a question of addressing climate change by allowing people to repopulate neighborhoods that are losing people on an absolute basis. Dunbar Point Gray, I mean, really, these places are dying for new people. And new residents to reinvigorate the local high streets, all within access to cycling, transit, walking. We need to relax parking. If you want affordability, if you want a policy to create more affordable housing, I've heard council ask that, relax parking. Zero rate housing for GST. You should be lobbying the federal government to zero rate housing for GST. You should be lobbying the provincial government to pull back property transfer tax, which has now climbed to 5% of land. So with that, I compel you to approve this policy. It's the right thing to do. It's ethical thing to do. For environmental sustainability, social sustainability and economic sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Carr.
Great, thanks. Good to see you here. Thanks for coming in. So my first question is, if the margins are razor thin for building rental housing, why do you do it?
Because because we're incenting it with more density and it balances the playing field. So there are developers, if you read the CMHC report on multifamily housing in major Canadian centers. They will tell you that generally speaking, rental housing delivers negative cash-on-cash returns. That's after you pay your mortgage, your net operating income, after operating expenses. There are cities like Vancouver and Toronto that have higher rents that make it just viable. If you add costs to this, if the interest rates spike, we're going to lose this window of opportunity to create rental housing. For four decades, we haven't seen rental housing in Vancouver, so it is marginal. We're talking about cash-on-cash returns. This is after you pay your mortgage, you collect your rents, you pay your operating expenses. Cash-on-cash returns are in the order of 1%. The rest goes into the principal portion of the mortgage. And then the the returns after you add back the principal and before tax are about 5% to 6% on equity invested. Right, so you know, when you create a rental project, you're creating a job for yourself for the next 100 years. You're unplugging toilets, you're repainting suites. I know, because I went, I went and studied with a fantastic developer named Walter Hardwick. I painted apartments with him, his apartments that he designed, planned, financed, leased for 20, 30 years with his brother. He was a developer, a fantastic developer and a fantastic politician. Developers are fantastic citizens. They're building amenities, the housing is the amenity. So that's my my two cents on affordability.
Okay. Which measures that are being put forward in this report? You know, like, for example, in C2 zones, not not having to go through a public hearing process. So which are going up to six stories, which measures are the ones that are most attractive to you in terms of enticing you to build more rental?
On our arterial roads, six stories as of right for rental is 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 completely sensible. You know, think of Peter Miller, who you saw last year, I think, before you at Fourth and Balaklava. An 80-year-old man who spent eight years of his life, 10 years of his existence on this planet, trying to get a rezoning approval. For a wood frame, carbon sequestering, six-story building with eight units that were below market out of 35. The guy had to spend eight years of his life to get a planning approval. This is ridiculous. We're rubber stamping, single detached home redevelopment with no net addition of housing stock and zero affordability. Right, and zero CACs and zero capital gains taxes paid. Right, left, right and center. It's it's the bulk of our approvals by square footage in this city. It's shameful. And we need to reverse that, and you, council, have the power to approve that. If you want to do something for this city and create a sustainable Vancouver, you need to approve this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fry.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, hi, Michael. Nice to hear from you here.
Counselor Fry.
Um, hey, so I just, just listening to your comments and stuff, it seems to me, and the the 1% piece really struck with me, so really. The only big winners here are the banks, is what I'm feeling you're you're kind of laying down.
Yeah, I got, well, you know what is making this work is low interest rates. Honestly, we have a window of opportunity to create a surge of new rental supply, but if you wait, if you dither, if you push this off. You know, we know what's going to happen to interest rates in the long run. CMHC has been very helpful with with rental incentive financing, our CFI and their their multi-flex mortgages. So low interest rates are key to this. And frankly, we need rents. We have, we have people who are paying, you know, market housing requires market rents. If you want below market housing, you need to significantly increase the amount of vitamin D that you feed a project. You need more height, more density. That comes, the land is essentially free. You need that to balance the books. But yeah, banks, I don't know if banks are running away. You know, I heard CMHC is offering mortgages of, you know, 1% or less. This is a significant public investment in rental, but the margins are very thin.
So to to what degree and what percentage of new market housing do you think should fairly be directed towards? Below market housing? How do we sustain the population that just simply can't afford this market?
I hear a lot of, yeah, I I hear a lot of. I hear a lot of people saying that the market should provide all this, or actually frankly, the government should provide all of our housing. So I don't know, let's take that to the Canadian taxpayers. I don't think you're going to get a really good reception. I think we need all sectors, non-market and market. I mean, I worked for CMHC in assisted housing with co-ops, nonprofits, seniors housing, low-income housing. I work with developers, building market housing, and I think we need all sectors running. There is this sort of us and them, you know, thing going on here. Are you a developer? Really? Yeah, I am proudly a developer, right? I build communities. We're all in this together and we all need to solve this problem together. I think it's government and the market. But if you want market to deliver below market housing, you have to offer them something in return. It's transactional planning. It's quid pro quo. And you can do it. There I have lots of examples of 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 planning applications where the city has said, look, the housing is an amenity. What do we need to trade in order to get this at significantly below market rates? Richards and Robson, Millennium Project at Richards and Robson created 40, I think 40, I forget the number, 46 new self-contained. How, micro-units at welfare shelter rates. And what was the trade? It was it was nine or 10 floors on a condo tower. And those those new units were handed to the city, brand-new keys, zero risk in perpetuity at welfare shelter rates. We have a history of this. The city has perfected this over the last 10, 20, 30 years. So the answer is everybody, I think, Counselor Fry.
So so do you think on the scale that we're proposing with this, we could do inclusionary zoning?
No. It's a daydream. It's if, you know, unicorns and fairies. Unless you offer up significantly more density, this is a modest move to incent market rental. You know, and I think as the previous speaker said, nonprofits can jump in as well with the assistance of senior levels of government. They can play in this space as well. And you just heard that the absence of this policy has is letting is letting projects fall off the table. Time kills all deals for market projects and for below-market projects. But you know, I think you have to be careful. You cannot, you cannot burden marginal market rental projects with extraordinary below-market requirements. San Francisco tried it in in 2015. They said all all of our projects are going to be 25% deeply affordable. And what happened in 2016 in the city of San Francisco? They got zero new building applications. They got less new new rental than the year before. You know, because they're, 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 they're planning policies weren't grounded in basic land economics. So I appeal to you, listen to your expert real estate advisors on staff, your your expert planners. Listen to CMHC and their studies, to Coriolis, to City Spaces. You are armed to the teeth. With compelling economic evidence that this policy is 110% needed. And you're seeing the fruits of it over the last 10 years of rental construction in in Vancouver. It's starting again after a 40-year drought. That's the data you need to look at.
Thanks so much. We're up to five minutes. We've got Counselor Hardwick for questions to the speaker. Please go ahead.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm only allowed to ask questions regarding this particular application, or I'd have some other things to say, Michael. Do you believe in data-driven, evidence-based decision-making?
Absolutely. Look at the rental rates, look at the vacancy rates, Counselor Hardwick.
Really, and I have been, and I have also been asking for information about secondary rental market, about short-term rental market, about zone capacity. About pipeline of development, and none of this information has been forthcoming. And furthermore, CMHC have noted that they have serious data gaps in their understanding. So do you not think that it would be more prudent? You talk about basic land economics and fail to understand the impact of precipitous upzoning and land inflation.
Is that a question, Counselor Hardwick?
Yeah, well, again, you're flying all over the place, and I'm saying. Are we being selective then in what data we're choosing to use to to support our narrative here?
I suggest you're lost in data or the the absence of it. It's staring you in the face.
It is not staring me in the face. In fact, even the director of planning acknowledged that they didn't have.
Hardwick, this is a question period, it's not a debate.
Michael say, you know, make a bunch of claims about my father and I'm not allowed to talk about.
You're actually not. This is questions to a speaker.
So I asked about data. He told me to follow the data and then said we were lost in data.
We're lost searching for it. The data is there. I mean, look, look at, look at the evidence. The, we have a million, what, no, what's the, what's the new population moving to Canada? A million people over the next four years? A third of them will come here? We we need new housing. We cannot just wander around asking for data. It's when it's standing, it's literally staring us in the face.
Around. Anyhow, I, there's no point in pursuing this conversation. I'll leave it.
Counselor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Michael. Thanks for coming in. Um, I just wanted to ask a question. I asked it to staff earlier. You may have heard the answer. I was asking about. Four-story rentals, fourplex townhomes, stacked townhomes on local streets. And and I think staff response was that probably the most financially viable form was the four-story apartment style. And I was asking more in the context of stacked townhomes or row homes, and I'm just curious if you could comment on that from from your perspective. Because is something I'm interested in and I think that many families are interested in seeing as well.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge really is the area and the expense of new construction. Frankly, the land cost as well. It's difficult. A townhome consumes a lot of space. And so I think we have to look at compact designs. If you want affordable rental affordability, one of the policies you can do is is to relax some of the design guidelines to create more compact. But still livable units. You can have. Units with with shared light, borrowed light, internal bedrooms, you know, one out of three. But townhomes consume a lot of space and the rents needed to balance the books are really high. So developers, I think, are are reluctant to to build rental townhomes. But you know, you will find them in different parts of the region, particularly in suburban locations. But Vancouver with its land costs, I think it's just the, just the price points on the rents are going to be challenging.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Swanson, up to five.
Yeah, hi, Michael.
Hello, Counselor Swanson.
I think you showed me my first pro forma.
I did.
I don't know if you remember, a long time ago.
More than a decade ago. 20, no, 15 years ago, I think.
So you seem to be pretty smart about housing.
Try.
So we have stats that say that. The median renter household, household income is about 50K. How do we get housing that those folks can afford?
Yeah, well, I think staff.
In the proportion that's necessary.
Yeah, I think I think in your staff reports, they've got the spectrum of housing and a spectrum of supply that includes government. It includes developers who do mixed, mixed-market, below-market projects. Minimum wage in in BC just went up to 15, 20 an hour. And we're hearing today, of course, the the living wage is now $20 an hour. So acknowledging that there's there are these gaps, but two people earning minimum wage have a combined income gross a year of $66,000. So we're we're getting there, you know, in terms of minimum wage work and the ability to house people. We have an income problem as well as a housing problem. I think that's pretty clear. You know, Vancouver's always struggled. But we're seeing new jobs come to Vancouver, better-paying jobs, tech jobs. But to answer your question, I think we really need to partner with with BC Housing and CMHC. And to keep the money flowing into British Columbia and into Vancouver. And I think, council, you have to be nimble and create the policy environment that allows nonprofit developers to get on with their projects. the nonprofit developers to get on with their projects quickly. You don't need, I mean, literally a year of rezoning at minimum for these, you know, for, for a project that's outside of existing policy. That's, 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 that's harmful.
Do you think if this goes through, that it will result in any non-market housing?
Non-mark, below-market? Yeah, oh, you know, it'll create, it'll.
Non-market, non-mark.
What do you mean? Like owned by, owned by third-party, um, nonprofits?
Owned by government or a nonprofit association and.
Government is entirely, yeah, government's entirely free to play in this space as well, too. Why not?
Because they can't afford the land?
They can afford the land. You just need a capital to do, like, how do they afford the, the building? You know, they get, they, they put a capital contribution in. If you want to do.
Do you think that, do you think that, uh, that the private sector will build any below-market in this, um, with this plan?
Absolutely. If you do a, if you have the option of doing a six-story building and, and the, the economics work out, um, the, the idea of having the, the 20% below-market, that, that can work. But again, it's really marginal, and you have to, you have to be very careful about the, the costs. It can happen. And there's, and there's provision in the zoning for that, or the proposed zoning.
Do you want to hazard a guess as to what the percentage of below-market would be?
I can't, no. But the option is there. The option is there. I guess the question is, if you want to flip it, is to say, what's the incentive? And, and is it, is it economically sound? Have you worked out, have you worked out the numbers so that it's appealing for someone to do this? You know, at the end of the day? Does it make sense? Can they actually finance it? Can, will a bank, um, finance their project? You have to be a partner, de-risking a, a market developer if you want them to deliver you below-market housing. But it can be done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Councillor Currie, on?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mayor. I, I just have one question, Michael, and it's, it's, uh, I, I think, trying to get to the heart of it. Council's going to have three options on this by the time we finish hearing the speakers, vote for it, vote against it, or conceptually, there could be amendments to try to further gate the pickup on this, or to refer to Vancouver Plan, for example. Well, in your opinion, what signal and what are the outcome of those three choices? What's the impact of those three outcomes?
Approve it. Please, no amendments to the amended amendments. We've had enough.
I'm not, I'm not, no, and let me be clear, I'm not suggesting them. I'm just saying that these are hypothetically as a body, things that can, might entertain. And I'm asking what you think.
Yeah, approve it.
In terms of housing impact, that, what is, what is the impact of a yes decision? What is the impact of a no decision? What is the impact of a change it and mash it all up decision?
Uh, putting it off or a no decision is going to send a lot of really good investors away. They're not going to come to Vancouver. They're going to invest their money building housing in some other community and will be, will be poorer for it. So approve it. It's, it's overdue. It's overdue. There are people waiting for this. There are people patiently waiting for this. I don't think it's, I don't think it will help anyone, any citizen of Vancouver, if you delay this or, or you, or refuse it. It'll be harmful. And the choice, you, you have this, this, this decision-making power right now. Um, and I, I would commend you to approve it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Thanks for that.
Thanks.
Thanks, that's it for questions. Really appreciate you coming in today.
Thank you.
And speaking to us, thanks. And we're going to move to our next speaker. I know that, uh, the speaker's in person, so it might take a second to set up the podium. Uh, but it's Michael Brown, speaker number four of 72.
Mayor Stewart, uh, speaker four is ready to go.
Great, okay. Hi, speaker. Uh, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Excellent. Uh, I'll just start by saying my name is Michael Brown. I am a Vancouver resident, and I am speaking in support of the report recommendations. I will confess, I have developed a number of C2 projects throughout the, uh, area of Vancouver and have some in the works at the moment. But I am actually here speaking on behalf of my two daughters that will want to live and thrive in Vancouver in the long term. And I truly believe that this initiative will move us forward in making Vancouver a, a better place in the long run. So I support the streaming rental around local shopping area initiatives because the city is in a housing crisis, and our existing rental stock is aging and is in very short supply. I firmly believe the initiative will result in a meaningful increase in the new purpose-built rental housing being constructed, which in my opinion is one of the most important steps in alleviating the current housing crisis. Increasing opportunities for the rental housing is of utmost importance because rental housing will provide options for households who cannot or choose not to pursue homeownership, which in turn creates more complete and inclusive neighborhoods by better meeting the diverse needs of a range of household incomes of the people who want to live and work in Vancouver. The addition of the increased rental housing specifically around the local shopping areas will help make these shopping areas more vibrant and economically sustainable by having more people in and around neighborhoods in order to support them. And it will also allow the residents who live there to be less reliant on cars and reduce their overall carbon emissions. Lastly, I'd like to express my support for the increased environmental standards being proposed, which will help the city fight the climate change emergency by ensuring these new buildings are built to very high environmental standards to minimize carbon emissions. In conclusion, the streaming rental around local shopping area initiative is an excellent policy that will move the city forward in a very positive direction. Increasing the options for purpose-built rental housing around shopping areas is a win for the future residents who live in these homes, the businesses surrounding them, and Vancouver as a whole, as it will help create a more complete neighborhood that support a diverse range of housing needs and incomes. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this very beneficial housing policy.
Thank you so much. I have a question from councillor Carr.
Thank you. And thank you very much for coming in. Um, so what is it in the terms of the staff report recommendations that incentivize, that would incentivize more building of rental housing in your mind?
In, in my opinion, I look at this and go, particularly in the C2 areas, it is, it gives this rental housing as an actual option, not having to go through the rezoning is a very important, um, part of that in the C2. But it is a very, very marginal decision. I am currently working on a project that is looking at it, A or B, and it is a, a, a thin margin under which it's being done. So if it's layered with any more affordability requirement, particularly in that C2 area, I do believe that you will not get rental building, um, coming to that C2. So I think the big thing that's incentivizing this now is the, the ability to do it without a, without a rezoning.
And I assume that saves time and money.
Significant time and money.
Okay, thank you.
And puts some certainty on it, not putting it through a big public process.
Right, perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next speaker, who is Megan Pohanka.
Thank you, and good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Okay, I'm up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Great. My name is Megan Pohanka. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm the vice president of Project Generation at Catalyst Community Development Society. Catalyst is in support of these proposed policy changes. For those who may not be familiar with Catalyst or our work, I'd like just to take a minute to explain our model. We are a Vancouver-based nonprofit society incorporated in 2013 with a mission to deliver affordable housing and program space in our communities. We bring market real estate development expertise and financial, for, financial equity to work with nonprofits and faith-based organizations to support the development of their assets for community benefit. Catalyst also acquires real estate, which we develop, own, and operate to provide below-market rental housing. We have completed seven projects to date, five of which we own or co-own and operate. We currently have 10 projects in development across BC, totaling 1,400 secured non-market residential units and 80,000 square feet of community and commercial space. Catalyst is focused on serving tenants with household incomes in the range of approximately 30,000 to 100,000 per year, representing the demographic who stands to benefit from this new proposed policy. These policy changes would open the door for existing, underutilized land in our city in transit-oriented and walkable neighborhoods to be redeveloped through a more predictable and streamlined process. This provides a more even playing field through incentivizing landowners and developers to pursue rental over more condo development. Eliminating the requirement for rezoning further incentivizes more projects to be brought forward, saving significant time and money and expediting the delivery of more homes in our communities. As a nonprofit who partners with other nonprofits and charities, it is very challenging to make the project financials work. Other elements of this policy are aligned with supporting our ability to create viable projects, including the six-story building form, allowing for lightwood frame construction, which is significantly more cost-effective for our project over conventional concrete construction. This allows us to maximize the number of homes and revenue-generating area provided in our project. The new policy will also require new rental projects to achieve more advanced energy performance targets in the form of passive house certification or net-zero emissions. The support in this policy of a simplified building form allows for stacking of floorplates and other design efficiencies, especially relative to energy performance. Reducing building stepping and the requirement for more complex exterior forms aligns us passive design principles and optimal building system design. In closing, our team is in very much support of these encouraging policy changes that will increase the supply of desperately needed rental housing secured in perpetuity. We at Catalyst look forward to the prospect of partnering with groups in these zones that could now explore the opportunity to steward their land through the inclusion of rental housing, which is vital for the long-term success and livability of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. You do have a question. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks for coming. So the CCPA had a study that said that if land were free, nonprofits could build housing that, um, say, where a, a one-bedroom would rent for 1,300, and that could be finagled around with, so some could pay 800 and some could pay 1,800. Is that kind of what Catalyst does, that kind of thing?
We, our projects are kind of across the spectrum. It depends on the municipality and, and the specific terms of that redevelopment, as well as what our partners strive to achieve. So our projects are mixed income, so there's a range, um, of, of what we can support within the building. And the higher rent in, in that particular redevelopment will support deeper subsidies of other units. And to your point on, on land, um, much of our, our work is dependent on the land being provided, usually through, um, a partner in, like a church or other faith-based organization that has very valuable land in the city, but not any additional equity. And that's where we'll come to the table and work together to, to mutually move our mission forward.
So do you think that Catalyst could take advantage of this proposal and build non-market housing that would serve people in the 30 to 80K income range?
Definitely. We, we see a lot of possibility, uh, should this policy be approved. Echoing your comments there, oh, sorry, go ahead.
But you'd have to get someone to buy the land for you.
Yes, we're, we, it's, it's a long road to get to a point where, um, we as a nonprofit could support, um, significant injections to purchase land. But to date, we've had a lot of success in partnering, uh, with municipalities as well where the land is donated as an equity injection into the project to make it viable.
So if the city did a land assembly, for example, on a, just off an arterial or something, they might partner with you to build some housing that actually was affordable?
Yes, that process has been done before through an RFP, um, to deliver exactly that using existing city land and, uh, redeveloping for affordable housing use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for questions. I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Uh, we have Craig, thank you, Craig Jorgensen, speaker number six.
Thank you, council. Uh, thank you, council. Uh, good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Craig Jorgensen. I live and work in Vancouver. I'm humbled to join you tonight as we gather virtually and in-person to discuss land, the land use vision of the uncharted territories of the Musqueam, Skomish, and Saluteet Nations, which form our city. I take a moment before my comments on this matter before council today to center the fact that the millennia-old housing typology of our city is multifamily longhouses. Our city and community carry the sins of burning down these at the Senoc, uh, village and continue to hold the majority of that land in the form of Vanier Park, uh, to this, uh, proposal today. There are elements of the proposal that I support, support without reservation, but I have specific areas of the proposal which seem to contradict other aspects of the proposal, previous council direction regarding the citywide plan and the climate emergency action plan. I have four key amendments I urge you to make to this item in order to make this a wonderful, uh, plan that will enable Vancouver to restore its traditional character. These amendments would serve to deprioritize rentals in hazardous locations and prioritize them in livable transit-oriented areas. First, amend the eligibility map to actually include rapid transit stops and stations as a criteria. This is stated in the policy statements, but the eligibility map excludes the entire Nanaimo and Toinac at station areas and portions of the Renfrew and Rupert stations, as well as the R4 stops. Um, second, remove portions of the truck-intensive arterial corridors such as Knight Clark to phase out the practice of sacrificing renters' health as living shields protect low-density neighborhoods from noise and poor air quality. Third, prioritize implementation of four-story zones first and then later permit the six-story districts. This will allow communities to step up to high density rather than having density that has belatedly stepped down to low density. Fourth, direct staff to provide update to council and the public on the status of the Nanaimo, 29th Ave, Renfrew, and Rupert Station area plans, which has been directed as, as quick actions in the Vancouver Plan, but are now completely missing from any of the current planning conversations. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks for coming in. I don't see any, um, questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. But thanks so much for sharing your thoughts. Uh, council, we're going to hear from, uh, Roberta, uh, Olenek, uh, speaker number seven.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Please go ahead, up to, uh, five minutes.
Okay. My name is Roberta Olenek. I live in Vancouver, and I strongly oppose this secured rental policy. First, the inclusion in one public hearing of both the amendments to C2 zones and the creation of the new rental zones in low-density areas is inappropriate. These two aspects are completely different beasts. They have been rightly treated separately in many previous engagement processes. To conflate them now at this critical stage creates confusion and makes it harder for people to comment. Council must therefore carefully discern whether comments provided in this hearing refer to only one or the other aspect or to the plan as a whole. And I wonder whether it's possible for council to approve one aspect and not the other, or if this is an all-or-nothing proposition. My comments today concern the new rental zones in low-density areas. I support facilitating more rental in, housing in these areas, but doing so through the new rental zones is unacceptable for reasons too numerous to cover in five minutes. Among these reasons, the notification and engagement processes used to obtain public input were inherently biased in favor of the policy. The new rental zones would be imposed even though all data on actual housing needs has yet to be provided as required by the motion recalibrating the Housing Vancouver Strategy post-COVID. Rezoning for market rental would increase land values, making housing less affordable, not more. Imposing these rental zones uniformly across vast swaths of the city ignores existing communities. ignores existing community plans and the unique context of Vancouver's diverse neighborhoods. Building multi-story apartment buildings that take up virtually the entire lot right next to much smaller existing houses would significantly impact livability for current residents. Alarmingly, the referral report makes repeated reference to extending the new rental zones to additional streets beyond those currently included, without any indication that the public will ever be consulted about those extensions. In that case, what is to stop the city from making every street a rental zone, leaving nowhere to live for those who want to avoid having an apartment block as their next-door neighbor? The referral report admits that, quote, "Introducing larger buildings would have some impact on existing homes in low-density areas, particularly on immediately neighboring lots," end quote. Let's be clear, these impacts would not be on existing homes. They would be on the people living in those homes. The report describes these impacts as incremental. For me, they would be monumental. My house is not an investment. It's my home, my refuge, sanctuary, my nest. Over twenty-five, twenty-nine years, I have put much time and effort into renovating to make it my own. In my little yard, all the retaining walls and walkways are built from carefully collected reclaimed materials. I have put in a native plant garden and a small pond to create habitat for my beloved birds and pollinators. I am fed by my fruit trees, berry bushes, vegetables and herbs. I share my produce with friends and neighbors. If a multi-story building were built next to me looming over my treasured-now-sunny garden, my house would be, my home would become just a house, and for me, an unlivable house. To be compelled to move from a place I wanted to stay until I was too old to manage is a daunting and exhausting prospect. Wherever I moved in my remaining lifetime, there would not be enough time to recreate my garden. At sixty-five, I really don't have the energy to start all over again. Until this rental plan, I never imagined I might have to. There are better ways to integrate rental housing into low-density neighborhoods. Why not apply the new rental zones to specific city blocks where all the current residents agree to them? Why not replace the boxy buildings allowed under the rental policy with duplexes, laneway houses and row houses of a height, placement and footprint that more closely align with existing homes and garages? Why not provide incentives for converting existing homes into three streets, into three suites through the secondary suite program for rentals? These solutions would respect the concerns of current residents and thus ensure new renters would be welcomed to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Speaker. Is that it?
Yes.
Thanks so much. There are no questions for you, so I am going to thank you for participating today and we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thanks again. We have Jeremy Stone, speaker number eight.
All right. Thanks so much. My name is Jeremy Stone. I live here in Vancouver and until recently I lived at Oak and Twenty-Second. And I just want to assure you that living on arterial sucks. There's constant noise pollution, cars, trucks, ambulances, all hours of the day and into the night. There's air pollution. As the Sightline study has described, you know, fifty, you know, two and a half years are taken off of your life if you live within fifty meters of an arterial. And I know that that's an average, but I really worry about what I've done to my daughter by living on an arterial for three years. There's no grass or yards. There's nowhere I can have a barbecue with friends. Like, I can't sit in the grass with my daughter and read a book. Also, in Vancouver, there are few meaningful trees being planted on arterials. If you've been to the concrete hellscape of Main between Ape and Terminal, you'll see that many of the trees are just small spindly, sickly things. And there's no, you know, actual tree cover. There's nothing visually appealing with the trees. There's no shade. Another thing to mention is that living on arterials is actually expensive. Beyond the bizarre definition of affordable that Vancouver uses, which is completely decoupled from median income, if you look at Craigslist, the majority of two-bedrooms on Broadway are three thousand dollars or more. And on Cambees South of King Ed, they can range up to five thousand or more. And these are often for units that are five hundred to six hundred square feet in size. Patrick Oden made a good point that speculations already begun to drive up prices and it is very likely that these units won't even be fake Vancouver affordable by the time they're built, much less actually affordable. So the reason I'm against this plan is the council is not taking the distribution of density throughout the city seriously. Density needs to be channeled into single-family neighborhoods and not simply arterials. It's endlessly frustrating that this council can't even pass a moderate proposal to pilot one hundred units of multifamily density and scatter sites around the city, but staff can somehow pull together a plan to force even more density into already dense arterials. If any of you have read any planning literature, you'll know that there are dozens and dozens of articles about the huge negative contributions that single-family housing has on the climate crisis, the loss of complete communities, housing affordability and similar issues. Cities are suffering due to single-family housing. There's little empirical question here regarding that statement. But this council is just chipping away at the edges of the problem, forcing density into arterials and pushing basement suites instead of getting real about the vast swathes of underutilized land in the city that is occupied by single-family zone neighborhoods. I didn't agree with Gregor Robertson on much, but when he was asked about the enormous increases of density in the West End and Grandview Woodlands local area plan, he responded by saying something along the lines of, "We are expecting huge population increases in Vancouver over the next few decades and everybody is going to have to share in the density." But I'm getting the feeling that those of us who are shoved into arterial housing are the only ones sharing in the density. Single-family homeowners get to enjoy all the benefits of lower densities, quiet streets, tree cover and other amenities, while single parents like me are stuck on arterials and expensive units and all the negative impacts that they carry. So instead of cramming more density in arterials, I would love for this council to stand up to single-family homeowners and craft zoning plans that force them to share in the density. Real density, multi-unit density that can house our whole population and share the benefits of non-arterial streets. Until council can make significant strides towards reforming single-family zoning in the city, there's just no way I could support additional density on arterials. This needs to go back to staff and a more comprehensive plan needs to be developed. And just two final points, you know, in situations like these, we're always presented with the argument that, "Well, this is just one of the tools in the toolbox. This is the opportunity we have at hand, so it's better to do something, nothing." But we never seem to get to the more foundational proposals. We just get these piecemeal bits at the edges and it's just not good enough anymore. We need transformational change now. And finally, I'd like to mention that I've read the other public comments against this rezoning and I do not stand with them at all, specifically the nivious ones decrying how density will destroy their neighborhoods. That's all a crock and I have no desire to be lumped in with them. So that's it. Thanks. Sorry about the rant.
That's fine. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Thanks though for participating tonight and we are on to Melissa Lim. Sorry, Melissa, Melissa Lem, speaker number nine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to speak tonight. As mentioned, my name is Melissa Lem and I'm a family doctor who lives and works in Vancouver. And I'm also president-elect of the Canadian Association of Physicians for the Environment. And tonight I'm asking you to support the streamlining rental around local shopping areas proposal because I feel it provides a balanced look at what we need to do to increase rentals and housing in the city. So I live in Kitsellano with my family in a home near a major arterial street in an area directly affected by the proposed changes. And if new rental buildings are built near us as a result of this proposal passing, we will see more people on our quiet sidewalks, construction sites at our windows and fuller buses. And you know what? I'm really hoping that happens. One major reason I feel this way is because this proposal is a great move for the climate, which is on many of our minds as the world converges on Glasgow this week for COP twenty-six. And our job is to take these commitments our governments are making to the world and implement them here at home. Increasing density near local shopping areas and transit corridors means more people walking and rolling to meet their daily needs instead of burning fossil fuels that pollute the air, killing over fifteen thousand Canadians each year. Not only that, but choosing active transportation like walking or cycling also boosts our mood and cardiovascular health, saving money and connecting us to our communities. And there's also a good chance, and I hope that these new multifamily homes will be built with clean all-electric heating, using heat pumps that can warm homes in the winter, cool homes in the summer and save lives, instead of using dirty fracked natural gas from Northern B C that harms local and global health, contributing to the almost six hundred deaths we saw from B C's extreme heat this summer. Housing is one of the most important social determinants of health and we know we have a housing crisis in our city. An increasing proportion of people are renting because of affordability issues, which can result in housing insecurity when landlords sell or renovate. Having to move multiple times is linked to depression, low self-esteem, lack of attachment to your community and worse physical health and chronic diseases in children persisting into adulthood. As we know, over half of people in our city are renters and it's so important that they have access to more affordable, purpose-built rental housing to avoid being evicted and those health consequences. Two decades of research also show that higher urban density when well-planned is linked to a lower risk of diseases like diabetes, heart disease and obesity because of increased physical activity. This will help us adapt to the global heating we know is going to get worse before it gets better because climate change amplifies existing health risks. So outside my window right now, I know there are trees that are changing color and huge evergreens across the street and I'm thinking about the run I took by the ocean this morning and our family's walk to the grocery store last week to buy treats for Halloween. Other families with diverse incomes also deserve the chance to live in secure and affordable housing right here in my neighborhood too. So I encourage you tonight to please take a look at the big picture and vote to support these important housing changes that will take us faster down the pathway to cleaner air, increased active transportation and climate-friendly communities. Thank you.
Thank you. You do have questions, Counselor Carr? You're up for five minutes.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Lem, for coming to speak to us. I don't know if you listened to the speaker just before you, but he was a resident who lived with his family on an arterial and he relayed to us his concerns about, about living on arterials in terms of the noise, air pollution, impossible impacts of those on his daughter. What are your comments about that?
Yeah, and I definitely hear those concerns and we do know that air pollution is linked to increased risk of heart disease, lung disease, cancer, developmental issues in children. So in, I would say I do agree that more areas of the city should be opened up to development for rental housing. But I think one thing we have to keep in mind also is kind of the overall climate, our overall climate plans, right? So if you open up, for example, areas for higher-density housing in areas that aren't well-supplied by public transit, don't have lots of amenities nearby, then people will be driving more and they won't necessarily be taking public transit as much. So, you know, I think it's a trade-off in some ways between having access to amenities and public transit where you can easily walk and roll and, and kind of the, you know, the aims of overall increase in rentals and, and air quality. Yeah, anyway, it's a tough, it's a tough question, but overall I would say, you know, the city could go further in expanding rentals past just arterials and the block beside them.
Great. Thank you. Maybe we all can go faster in the industrial sector and getting non-polluting hybrid and electric vehicles too. Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate your, your taking the time to speak to us.
Thanks. I have questions for you, Doctor. Thank you very much for calling in this evening and, and your repeat performances. Really appreciate your input in, in our debates here. A couple of questions. You might have missed it earlier today, but in council questions to staff, we asked, this, this, this report is tied to Big Move One in our Climate Emergency Action Plan and it's the first substantive motion we have forward to council in terms of building complete communities. What do you think? I just asked you what, what you think about, about that. How important is this? And how are you feeling our council's doing in terms of addressing the climate emergency?
Mayor Stewart, I think that is an incredibly important question, especially as we've just come off a summer where we saw close to five hundred and ninety-five deaths from extreme heat from the heat dome. I saw more patients in my office than I ever have in my entire career with heat illness. And then also, you know, that, as we know, bitten which burned to the ground because of direct effects from the climate emergency and burning fossil fuels. So I think city staff have made, have made it pretty clear that every single one of these measures is absolutely important for us to hit our goals of, you know, a fifty percent reduction in greenhouse gases by twenty thirty and net zero by twenty fifty. So it's absolutely important that every single one of these measures passes. And, you know, I called in and spoke about the Climate Emergency Parking Program last time in support, in support of that. And I do believe that that was very important to pass, but given that it didn't, I think it's even more important that every single measure that we put forth that's going to result in reduced emissions like this Big Move One, like, like this plan, it's even more important that it passes now.
Thanks so much. And you, did I catch that you actually live on an arterial yourself or on a main road?
Yeah, I live, I live about two blocks in from a major arterial.
Okay. And part of this proposal is to both allow rental on arterials and just one street in from arterial, so similar to where you're living. Just, I guess I'm just thinking about, well, I think I've lost my train of thought after sharing for twelve hours and I forgot my, my question. But just wanted to thank you for calling in this evening and, and, oh, actually, my question was, how do you imagine arterials will look in a decade or twenty years?
Do you know what I've noticed as I walk in my neighborhood, that there are a lot of empty businesses? And I think part of it is that not a lot of people can afford to live in these neighborhoods, right? And I know in the neighborhood just beside mine, Point Gray, there's, it's emptying out of retail in many places because there aren't just the volumes of people to frequent those, to frequent those amenities. So I can imagine, you know, if I, if I think about the major arterial that I live close to, I can see more families walking. I, I see bustling cafes. I see, you know, tree-lined streets where people are enjoying walking and, and rolling. I think it will just result in a more vibrant neighborhood where people are connected to their communities, where they have secure housing, where they can actually build connections to those communities. So, yeah, that's, that's what I hope for. That's what I hope to see in my own community.
And what do you think about vehicular traffic? Do you think we're going to make some inroads and replace more and more cars with electric vehicles and more vehicles overall with, with public transit? I mean, do you kind of see that as the direction Vancouver is generally going?
I, I absolutely hope so. Yep. Yes. I mean, again, you know, a lot of funding for, some funding for that would have come from passage of the Climate Emergency Parking Program, but overall, it seems like we are oriented in that direction. And certainly the mandates that the federal and provincial governments have brought in about zero emission vehicles and kind of, you know, incentivizing public transit, hopefully will go a long way towards that as well.
Hmm. So I guess today's, you know, emissions choked arterials could actually turn into ten or fifteen years to actually a much different place in the city.
That's right. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cars that are on them hopefully will be cleaner. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time this evening. That's it for questions for you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel, we are at nine forty-eight. We probably have time for one more speaker and we've got Tyman Stewart in person, speaker number ten.
Hello.
Hi there.
I, I kind of want to comment this in a different way. I mean, you already know what I'm kind of up to as it is, but I've, I'm, I'm genuinely speaking from a, a personal feeling of I'm just sick to my stomach at what's going on. And I've changed everything I want to say because I listen to people and I'm listening to the fact that the majority of people speaking tonight are developers, which is exactly what I'm angry at, is the fact that it feels like the city leans towards constant development and I'm not against that. I live on an arterial too. I live on West Twelfth Avenue and I'm happy to have density increases. I want to have more around me as well. But at the same time, I don't want a six-story apartment building built beside me. I'm not selling my home. My home is my life. I've had this home for twenty-two years. I took out every ounce of savings I had and my, my RRSPs and I bought this home and I rented out my basement until I progressed enough in my job that I could afford my own mortgage. I've talked to so many people. This isn't about rich and poor. This isn't about just arbitrarily throwing the fact arbitrarily throwing the fact that we're going to do the same thing in every part of the city. This isn't right. What makes sense is to talk to the communities themselves, each community, and let's find the ways that we can increase the density, increase rentals and still maintain our historic nature in the city and not clear-cut everything to put up a six-story or a four-story apartment building. It's horrific. Mr. Weeb asked, or Councilor Weeb asked a really good question of Mr. Erb and Mr. Erb's answer was, "Well, you know, that would require neighborhood-specific planning and this would be too cumbersome." That's the whole point here, it should be cumbersome, we should be talking to our communities, each individual, whether you live in Kits, whether you live on the west side, whether you live off of King Edward, it doesn't matter. Talk to these communities, talk to these people and say, "Hey, how do we make the neighborhood stay as a neighborhood and still open up things so that people can live there and we have more communities and we have more, ah, density and rentals?" Everybody seems to think that adding more rentals is going to solve everything, let's be realistic, nobody who's really following what's going on out here thinks these are going to be affordable rentals. You're gonna drive out my family and thousands of other families into what? Rentals? Where would you like people to go? We're human beings and everyone talks about units and land values and houses. It's not about that, these are homes, this is everyone's home. If someone's apartment building was being torn down for another apartment building, my heart would go out to that situation. I would go, "Oh my God, this is wrong, these people are being forced out of their homes." This is the problem. Let's work together, all sides, let's find the answers and not make swathing choices of building all the height and width we possibly can build in one fell swoop everywhere. That isn't the answer. I'm, I'm just, I've been so sick and feeling so knotted at not being able to have choices and, and participate and feel what's going on. You, you say everybody knows, I had somebody I work with practically daily call me yesterday and say, "I saw you on the front of the newspaper and I thought, 'What's going on?'" And then I looked at the site for the city and it was like, "Oh my God, I'm on the blue zone." My entire neighborhood is slated for rezoning and the single-family homes are coming down. They didn't even know, and this is just one example, I have dozens of examples, you can well imagine, there are thousands of people who have no concept of what's happening here and this is part of why I went, "There's gotta be a way to deal with this, there's gotta be something that says, 'I can do something else, I'm gonna hire a lawyer.'" So this is what I'm doing, I see I have two seconds left.
All right, actually, overtime, thanks very much, but you do have, uh, questions for Councilor Hardwick, just a reminder, Council, we have, we have about seven minutes left in, in this hearing, so, uh, Councilor Hardwick.
Well, thank you, Timon, and thank you for your passion for your home and your neighborhood. But after having said that, why don't you just sell and move? Open it up.
Well-
People that want to develop it, why don't you just sell and move?
That's a really good point and, you know, Michael Mortensen, when he left, asked me the same question when I said to him, "I think you're being unrealistic about your development ideas." It, not everyone has that luxury. I'm not a rich person, I'm, I've done well in my life, I have, I've been able to afford my home, but through many circumstances with dozens of people I talk to, I'm, I'm carrying a million and a half dollar mortgage on the house I have now, so I'll get an extra five hundred thousand if I sell, and where am I going to go? I guess I can go rent, I can take my five-family household and I can go rent. So that's why I can't sell and then if I don't sell, I've invested in my home, I literally have spent twenty-two years in my home and put my heart and soul into it. Everything I've done in that home, I've done myself. I have a two-hundred-foot beech tree on my front lawn that is the size of this podium in front of me, wide, and it wants to be torn down or it's going to get torn down to make room for something else. That's not right. I can't sell and then I won't be able to afford, this is all about affordability, this is literally what it boils down to, everyone's talking about affordability except the developers, it's about affordability. This city isn't affordable, I get it, I, I can't move, even if I wanted to, I can't move, but like many people in so many of these neighborhoods, we've invested in our homes and it's our livelihood. So, I, I can't sell, I just can't, thank you.
Again, thank you for, um, your passion on the subject, very much appreciate you speaking to us today.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Kirby, you have?
Yeah, hi, thanks for being here, just had a couple of quick follow-up questions, you mentioned, um, sort of having a, a multi-story building next to you and you're on West Twelfth Avenue, so are you in a single-family homes, do you have just single-family homes around you? I'm just trying to get a bit of contact.
Yes, I, I have single-family homes around me, yes.
Okay, so you don't have anything-
I have a, I have this, I have the school right, uh, Kits High right across the street from me, which doesn't bother me, the arterial doesn't bother me, I know there was a huge rant by a gentleman saying, "Hey, arterials are horrific and polluting and everything else." I, I, I've always enjoyed living where I live, I really have, it's, it's, I love my neighborhood.
And you do have, because I'm very familiar with that area, I used to live there, because you do have multi-story to the west of you, um, uh, west of Vine, do you not?
Uh, to the east of us, there's multi-story, up, up, yes, off, to the, to the, yes, not west, to the east of Vine.
Okay.
If my neighbors wanted to sell-
How, how is that working in the neighborhood? Because that's fairly close, like that's within a block or two.
It's, it's been there for so long you don't notice it, but I'm sure, you know, I have no clue how long those, they've certainly been there for the twenty-two years I've been there, so let's say thirty years ago when they redeveloped that, I'm sure there was an uproar even then. But I, I think we can still do the density, like, if I have three neighbors beside me who want to sell and we say to them, "Hey," they go ahead and sell to a developer and the developer wants to develop in a historic way that suits the neighborhood, doesn't make it six stories high, makes it a two-story building, I know, and then creates the same green space and then plots nine apartments on that area, then you've got triple the density, is from the three homes to the nine homes.
I just wanted to jump in because we get a very limited amount of time that we're allowed to ask questions and so-
Sorry.
-that was gonna be my question in terms of how you would see the density happening, do you just see it being lower, like you said, for, for example, two stories? Like, I'm just trying to get a sense of what-
Yeah, that's, that's how I would see it, respecting the neighborhoods and that's why my, 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 I challenge you to find ways to do it per neighborhood.
Okay, but like that four-story, for example, on Vine and Twelve that you said sort of blunted, it's been there a long time, that's not something like that that you would support?
I, no, I would not, no, I would not, I would, I would support more townhomes or more variable ways to build so that, that, we're, we're clear-cutting, we're clear-cutting homes and we're clear-cutting trees and we're, we're ignoring our environment, I mean, everybody keeps talking about environment, so, and yet we're not talking about the fact that we're to destroy the entire tree canopy when seventy percent of the city is covered, the trees are owned by private citizens, like seventy percent of the tree canopy is, is owned by privates and we're going to redevelop all that? That's, that's a bit much.
So your, so your, so your perspective of two stories is reasonable in terms of densification? Is that-
Sorry, I, I, sorry, I didn't understand, I didn't hear your question.
May I make a motion to finish hearing from the speaker in line of questions?
Uh, actually, we're at nine fifty-nine and if we don't extend, uh, we will-
I'm making a motion to extend.
You have to extend?
And we need two-thirds vote on that, do we have a secondor for that?
Second, Councilor Domnado.
Okay, all in favor extending to hear this speaker, uh, say yay.
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 Those opposed say nay. Thank you, please continue, Councilor Kirby.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, so I just wanted to be clear, so, you know, in terms of, you said you supported densification, you want to respect sort of the, the, sort of the existing residents in the neighborhood and so you're suggesting that two stories is the most appropriate way to do that, do you see any other options beyond that?
Again, it, it's kind of how I started, is, is we need to focus on what each neighborhood will, will, will needs and can be part of and, and go to each neighborhood and actually inform them of what the choice, what we can do and how do we work together, both the neighbors, the communities, the city, staff and a developer, together. Now, the problem is, of course, developers want money, that, that's all that's going on here, is these, these are the people that are gonna win, the developers.
No, I'm just gonna leave it there because I was just interested in sort of like consultation, but your specific, because you're speaking to your experiences, I was trying to get your, your specific perspective, but thank you for speaking, Council, I appreciate it.
Thanks for asking.
Thanks much and there are no other questions for you, so I'll just thank you for your time and Council, just inform you that we're going to recess the meeting now, uh, and pick it up, um, with speaker number eleven, I believe, of seventy, uh, on Thursday night at six P.M. I think that's right, clerk, is that, uh, I think I've got that all?
Uh, yes, six P.M. on Thursday.
Great, thanks so much, Council, so, uh, appreciate your time today and we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Goodnight.